Good morning to all. At this time, we all call to order the Board of County Commissioners' meeting for Thursday, September 16th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioners Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klicka.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcroft's absent.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Iler.
Here. We do have a quorum present. Would you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would ask that those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, could you turn it to silent mode or off so as not to interfere with our electronic communications? We have one spatial recognition presentation to make this morning. We'll do so at this time. I'm going to ask Ally Stoltz to join me at the podium. There you are, Ally. For the last ten weeks, there's been a group of Johnson County citizens participating in our Citizens Academy. And we want to recognize that participation this morning. We had a big photo earlier, and certificates have been presented to all the individuals who were present and who participated in that program. It's a, from my perspective, an important program in helping all of us understand the function of county government, what county government does, and all the various aspects of managing county government. I note that in my notes, there was, everybody visited the jail, and everybody got out of the jail.[147.16][147.16](Laughter) To my knowledge, no one was kept there. Things such as a crime lab, and data presented by the county appraiser as to how that operation functions, and the other departments and agencies that support county services for our citizens were also explored. Our next class is in the spring of 2018, and would encourage anybody who wants to become a part of that Citizens Academy process, where can they go? On our website, Ally?
If you go on our website through the County Manager's Office, and you click on Citizens Academy, the application is available right there, and the link will be posted on our Facebook page later today.
Okay, very good. Well, I'm going to ask at this time, those who participated in the Citizens Academy, would you please stand to be recognized? Yeah? Thank you.[211.12][211.12](Applause) Thank you very much. Ally, did you have some comments you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So, I'd like to just thank the class for all their effort and enthusiasm they put into the program. We were really impressed with how inquisitive and engaged they were throughout each session, as well as their consistent willingness to help out and be active in the community. Many of these fine graduates, and those that were not able to make it in this morning, have been asking about volunteer opportunities, and we will be working in the next coming months to make sure you guys stay engaged. In addition, they showed their dedication to civic service through the Human Service Department when Deb Collins challenged them to bring food for the Feed the Need campaign, and they had an awesome amount of food that they brought. I've really had a blast getting to know this whole excellent group. Another thanks is in order to all the county employees who helped make this possible. We have 52 employees contribute to this program by either giving a presentation, guiding a tour, providing materials, or offering support to the Citizens Academy throughout its 10 sessions. Without their efforts, this program would not be possible, and we are deeply thankful for their contributions, which included staying after hours on Tuesday evenings to make sure that each session was both informative and fun. I would also like to extend a special thanks to Cindy Green, who made this possible. Without her support, I would not have been able to do this. Moving forward, the applications for the Spring 2018 Academy, as Chairman mentioned, they'll be due January 18th, and that academy starts February 15th, and will run to April 26th. For more information, visit the website. Again, thank you to each of the participants for giving us your Tuesday evenings. It was an absolute pleasure getting to know all of you, and with that, I would like to say congratulations again.[321.58][321.58](Applause)
I should have noted that Ally is an intern in the County Manager's Office, and so she's done an excellent job in coordinating this effort.
Thank you.
And appreciate it very much. So, congratulations to you also.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. And congratulations to all of you.[342.62][342.62](Applause) At this time, we will turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, invite you to the podium, state your name and address, and be glad to receive that information.
Yes, it's, thank you for allowing me to be here today, Commissioners. I appreciate it very much, and good morning to you. My name is Michael Moyer. I'm a resident of Olathe, Kansas, 16101, West 150th Street, here in Olathe. The reason why I'm before you this morning is last fall, I was asked by the show car community if they would, that I would start a car show here in Olathe, Kansas. I started the car show at the old Price Shopper on 151st and Merlin. By the 10th week, we had over 100 show cars in attendance, and many of the people here in Olathe, Kansas, spectators would just come to view the cars and appreciated the fact that I started something like that. Since then, that property has been sold, and I'm no longer allowed to be able to hold the car show there. So, I started looking for another venue to be able to do something of this nature. So, I spied out the old Hy-Vee store there with a new library going in at this, possibly next year, and I heard that the county owned that property. So, what I wanted to do was is come and seek permission to be able to hold the car show there, and to be able to start it next year when the car show, next year begins. My understanding that this, the repairing or the rebuilding of the library would start sometime in 2019, I'm not for certain on that, but I wanted to get your permission to do so. The car show will be held every Friday night from 5:00 to 9:00, and we have been getting cars in all the way from Independence, Missouri, Belton, Missouri, Spring Hill, Kansas, and places of that nature. The people really enjoy this, and these people that just come to look at the cars enjoy it as well, too. I make no money on this myself. I do it because I want to do it. I do it because I love the show car people and the things that we do. We also help in different ways as far as being able to give out to the community in different ways that we possibly can. So, I just wanted to bring this before you, and in hopes that I would be allowed to do so, and hope that you consider it for me. Thank you very much.
Let me ask you this. When is, when is your next show? We can't take specific action today, but...
It's the City of Olathe Library. It would be the Olathe, that is the City of Olathe.
Oh, I see, okay. I was, I was wondering whether or not the county really owned that property.
We'll, we'll get information, Mr., to the gentleman here, and make sure we get everything squared away, so we'll do that. We'll work with you, make sure you're asking the right people, so we'll do that.
I appreciate that. I was told that the county had owned the property, and that's the reason why I wanted to come before you today and present it. The show would not start until April, and it usually goes from April till October, when the weather gets cold again, and then no longer the shows are on. And like I said, this is a cruise-in, and all it does is just people come and show their cars, and like I said, we have many spectators that come in and look at the cars, and they appreciate the fact that we do something like that, and it also, I talked to the Applebee's that's over there in the vicinity, and they said that they would love to have the business as well also. So, this not only just brings people in just to show cars, but it also gives something back to the community and to the businesses as well.
Good point. So, if you visit with Ms. Green, we'll get the information from you, and we'll work with you to make sure, guess, you get the proper request going.
I would appreciate that very much, and thank you for letting me come here today and present my program. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else?
My name is Sharon Carroll. My address is 1555 South Moonlight Road. They say you can find good in everything, and that can be said for Lineage Logistics Project as well. It has brought a community together. We are neighbors, now we are friends and concerned citizens, working together for a better understanding of how our county works, and we know we have more work that needs to be done. But we are up for the challenge because we are now truly Concerned Citizens for Responsible Government, a new organization that will keep us, meaning your voters, truly informed of day-to-day business of our county commissioners, airport commissioners, and the people who make decisions for us, that they have our well-being as their main focus. So, with that being said, I and the Concerned Citizens for Responsible Government ask you to please rescind your vote for the building formerly known as Lineage Logistics. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Mr. Raby?
Good morning. Tom Raby, 17513 West 113th Street, Olathe. I'm really pleased to see the Citizens Academy graduates come up here. I think that's a great thing, and I applaud the county, whoever's responsible for hosting and steering this, because in a negative sense, I was part of a so-called county leadership program back in the, in '05, I think, was the last year that it survived, and it lacked guidance. I notice this is not specifically for seniors, but that one was, but it lacked focus and guidance. Too many people tried to steer it into repotting flowers out at the arboretum and things like that, which is commendable, but it's not leadership. It's showmanship more than leadership. So, thanks for that. If you wander around the county, you'll find all kinds of nice places to eat, and I think the Health Department has a list of places that have been cited for violations recently, recently, if you want to avoid those. But, somebody's nodding. My, my wife and I went to a place, she's been there several times, and I hadn't spent much time out, and Stanley has a place to go and have a meal since Joe's Barn was out there, and most of you don't remember Joe's Barn, you're too young.
Mothers do.
Yeah.[756.13][756.13](Laughter) But there's a place out there called, I believe it's Sunset Grill, and it's a great place, so give that a try, and I'm not here to, I don't have any interest in it, so it's not for me. And I also want to thank the commissioners who have put election certification results on social media. I think that's a great thing. A couple of you, I've seen others I didn't see, but I'm not everybody's friend on Facebook, but I appreciate that kind of communication. It, it goes a long way in keeping people up to date, even those who don't care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vince Workowicz, 15445 South Moonlight Road. I'll be very brief. I think there's a lot of layers of staff between you guys and the Airport Commission, because there's been a couple of weeks where things have been said officially here in this room that are not true concerning the ability to make public comments at the Airport Board meetings, Airport Commission meetings. The one meeting in particular that I attended, the only way they had a quorum was two of their board members were on speakerphone. Anyway, came time on the agenda for the public comments to be made, those two board members hung up, and the Board Chairman announced that we could get up and make public comments, but they would not be part of the public record, which pretty much makes them useless at that point. And so, when I hear Mr. Iler and others say that we've all had ample opportunity to make comments, that is not true. And it wouldn't be hard for you guys to go back and check, I forget what date. If I had been smarter back then, I would have kept better notes, but I think you guys are telling the truth as you know it, but it's still not the truth. And that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, and I'm all for that car show thing. I like that idea.[897.23][897.23](Laughter)
Anyone else?
Good morning. Mike Jensen, 1257 East Butterfield Place and 15665 Moonlight Road. I also want to comment on the meetings, what we call hearings, public hearings. I've been, I've kind of watched this from afar now for eight years, and from all appearances, it looks like public hearings are a chance to let us air our concerns, but it really looks like the decision is made a long time before the hearing's ever held. I believe that you hear us, but I don't believe we have any meaningful input into the process. I believe that Lineage Logistics Project was a backroom deal done with no transparency, and that it was approved months and months before. I've gone back through all the records, I've looked at all the notes of the Airport Commission meetings, and it talks about how excited they are to come to New Century. It talks about how much they need the rail. It talks about, the record talks about how they'd break ground tomorrow if they could. And since July 6th, there's been hundreds of your constituents have stood at this same podium and told you we're not in favor of this. The only people that are in favor of it, that have spoke here, are two people that are getting paid to do so. Aaron Otto has appeared, he's the airport, he's the head of the Airport Board, and then Court Maxwell, who's an attorney that's donated to several of your campaign funds, has appeared here in support of this project. I'm going to read from your Code of Ethics. Code of Ethics for Johnson County Government. Representative government is based solely upon the consent of the governed, under a system whereby every citizen has a right to expect those who govern or serve in the government to act not for themselves, but for the governed as a whole. Since government can only act through its officials and employees, it is ever incumbent upon them, therefore, to honor the public trust and to instill confidence in government by their own integrity and conduct in all official actions. The word "trust" comes up in this document probably 100 times. Policy Statement. This is Section 3. All citizens be provided fair and equal access and treatment by the government without any appearance or element of discrimination, or favor, or consideration of any special interest. None of your citizens were invited to comment on this. Court Maxwell was invited to comment on it. Aaron Otto was invited to comment on it. And Hahnus, you and the fire chief from Olathe ended up going so far as to go to a homeowners' association meeting to represent Lineage Logistics. Who's representing us? All official actions taken in the performance of government duties or responsibilities are to be motivated to the service of the public interest and protection of public trust, without any regard for personal achievement, aggrandizement, or personal benefit. And (sigh) all persons who act for or represent the interests of Johnson County Government adhere to the highest standards of ethical conduct in the performance of their official duties to the end that the public trust is never violated, nor its power abused. We feel like you represented Lineage Logistics, you didn't represent us in this, and we've asked you over and over to rescind your vote, as they did in Leavenworth County, and as of yet, you haven't done that yet. We're asking you still to do that. The policies and procedures for operating, for operation of county government provide for efficient, cost-effective service responsive to the public interest that will preserve and promote confidence in government and the integrity of its members. This is standard 201, uphold the Constitution, laws, and regulations of the United States, the State of Kansas, and Johnson County, and never be a party to their evasion. I wonder if not requiring special use permits and conditional use permits, and violating all your own PEC 3 zoning regulations would amount to sidestepping or evading regulations. I wonder if trying to continually regulate the KC Pumpkin Patch and Winery would amount to evading Kansas state law that says that that's only controlled by Kansas state law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Bill Ball, 959th, 28570 West 159th Terrace and Gardner. And I would just briefly speak to your comments. The last meeting at the end, you said that, that you want to go on record, that you continued to do the right, you went through the right process, that there was public hearings, and, and I'm sure there were, that there were. But again, I've spoken in the past about, why don't you have these at night so more people can come? I can only come because I'm, I'm retired. My, my wife would be here if she, she didn't have to work. These meetings, the Airport Commission meetings in the day, and I haven't been able to find a lot of stuff on the zoning board. I wanted to go, go to that, and can't even find out hardly who's, who's on that. You're going through the right process, but it doesn't allow for, for our input when we don't even know that you're, you're bringing a building just six tenths of a mile from my house. As I've said, you, you have this arbitrary limit of 1,000 feet that you contact. I would hope that you would want to do above that standard, that you really want to serve the citizens that you work for, and be considerate. Wouldn't we be concerned about what you're doing when you're changing all of these zoning laws and, and going through the codes department instead of, of the, the process that Mike just spoke about? But I just feel that the, many of the citizens, especially in our area of town, we seem a little isolated from this process, and again, you can go through the right things, but I don't even think you went through the right things because you went around some things, and there's a process to go, go around those things, and I, again, I think you're playing, you're playing by the letter of the law instead of the spirit of the law. And these, the people that went through this Citizens Academy, I wonder if they learned about the process that you can go through to get around certain things in, in the county just so that you can go ahead and do what you want when there's citizens against this? I am still committed to this. I appreciate Lineage dropping out, but you can still put something else in with these same requirements unless you rescind the vote, and I just ask that you do that, and then in future, that you consider the, the citizens around the, the places that you're, you're doing things more than just the legal limit that you have to. Don't live by that letter of, of the law. Be concerned about your citizens with the spirit of the law.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Joyce?
My name is William Joyce. I live at 4806 Belinder Court, Westwood, Kansas. The subject is November 7th, 2017, view of the subject property by First District Commissioner and this taxpayer. It might be pointed out that the county appraiser and his appraisers have ignored these problems since 1995, even though they have been, they produced 66 and 44 pictures since 2010, and by increasing the value of about $40,000 from 2013 to $124,900 in 2017. And unsalable by as many as 8 of 12 FHA standards since about the year 2000. After the review, the Commissioner stated he would discuss the visit with the county appraiser. The taxpayer pointed out that the highest value of the eight ranch-style houses north of 48 Terrace was about $250,000, and that the probably the low, that was probably the lowest value of two-story houses south of 48 Terrace. The following exterior problems of the subject were pointed out. On the south side, there were about 1,238 by 32 square foot of sagging roof. The previous owner added a second layer of shingles over an original layer at about 10 inches of snow about 1979 or 1980, with too much weight on 2x4 rafters. Obsolete solar panels must be removed when the entire roof is shingled again. Five plexiglass windows are in the garage area. On the front or east part of the house, there is a garage door with buckled panels. There are three windows similar to those on World War II or Korean War Quonson huts with plexiglass sheets without framing or storm window. A front door stoop is flat and the cause, and is the cause of wood rot below the front door and the basement woodwork. There is a nine-panel aluminum frame window presumably from a salvage yard. On the north side, there is still some damage from a mini tornado that broke a 1 1/2-foot diameter tree branch on and against the house. There is still some damage to the roof and siding shingles, the chimneys deflectors, and window framing, et cetera. On the back or west part of the house, there are six windows. One is aluminum framed similar to the one on the south side. They are difficult to move up or down much of the time. Three siding windows look similar, but are apparently from different manufacturer. The middle window of the three is not actually a horizontal window. The inside is a real vertical wood-framed window. The outside window is apparently a vertical window turned sideways with the top filled in a trim. On one occasion, I raised one of two vertical windows. When, when I let go, it dropped and cracked the glass. This is believed to be the only house without 150 or 200 amp electrical service from a pole behind the house. This is 60 or 100 amp service diagonally from a pole behind three other houses. The inside is built about the same as the outside. This 86-year-old taxpayer in poor health and would appreciate if the Commissioner would persuade the appraiser to reduce the value to its real worth so this taxpayer does not have to drive his 23-year-old Saturn in the ice or snow for the hearing that is against the true value of the north.
Thank you.
I was surprised you let me read the whole thing.[1694.01][1694.01](Laughter)
Well, you read quickly enough to get within the five-minute time limit.
My name is Alan Lathan. I live at 25910 West 149th in Olathe, and I love car shows, too. I really do. But we really got some serious matters facing us here. We were in reference earlier about the Homeowners Association meeting. Over near, this is Prairie Highlands. My wife and I went out during the building up for the lawsuit to obtain signatures for people to sign up for the lawsuit. As talked about earlier, while the residents over there work, can't show up for these kinds of meetings, but we, we was having tremendous success in getting people to sign up for the lawsuit. I think it was about 811 actually signed the forms, and, and we had overwhelming success, and we didn't use any fear tactics. We just went to people, we asked the question, "Have you heard about the logenics process, the plant process?" "Yeah, we've heard about it." "How do you feel about it?" "Well, I don't like it." I said, "Do you have information to have an opinion?" "Well, yeah, we've had this stuff," and then we would inform it. We did not use fear tactics. As a result of this, the HOA Board decided that, well, we better put this fear thing down. And that's when they invited the county officials to come in during the HOA meeting, the very afternoon of the HOA meeting, not giving any other people a chance to visit and talk about that. It's kind of a reminiscence of all of the tactics that we've been complaining about here, and... And so, it always comes down to what, you know, my daddy told me growing up, there's what you can do, and then there's what you should do. What you should do is rescind this vote.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, that concludes the public comment portion of our agenda. I do have a couple of notes for the record. I will be signing two partial release of easements for the consolidated main sewer district due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines in the vicinity of 135th Street and Lamar Avenue and in the vicinity of 159th Street and Antioch Road in the city of Overland Park. And I will be signing an access agreement with Berry Prim to enable shared access on 127th Street for lots five and six, stipulated with the board's approval of the Cedar Ranch second plat on October 9, 2017. That concludes the notes for the record. Moving to the consent agenda, will the clerk read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, resolution number 096-17, consider annual approval and revision of the investment policy for Johnson County. And item number two, consider approving the 2018 audit plan proposed by the county auditor.
Is there any Commissioner who would like to have one of those items considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have one of those items considered separately? If no one to be heard, is back before the Commission, Mr. Allen.
Would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Epstein.
Chairman Ilet.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda item number three.
Consider approving the October 26, 2017 business session minutes.
Mr. Brown was absent. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Mr. Clicker.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Allen. Are there any corrections or additions to be noted? If none, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Epstein.
And Chairman Ilet.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to item number four.
Conduct a public hearing and consider approving the proposed streamlined Public Housing Authority annual plan for the period covering FY 2018 for submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So, the public hearing, the public hearing is open.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Jess Moffel with Johnson County Housing. This is a routine annual process required by HUD to publicly state any changes to our five-year or streamlined annual plan. There are no changes to either. I'll hit some key points of our program. Ninety-nine percent of housing assistance payments are paid to private, for-profit landlords within Johnson County, just under $10 million annually. Two-hundred-and-forty-seven landlords participate in the HCV or Housing Choice Voucher Program, 245 of which are for-profit. Johnson County Housing Authority serves 3,082 persons in 1,447 households. The ratio per house of people is 2.13. Fifty-one percent of households have a disabled occupant. Nineteen percent have an elderly occupant. Forty-three percent of participants or 1,325 children are age 17 and under. At the last Commission meeting, Commissioner Askraft asked a question about the unmet need for housing in Johnson County. According to the UCS, United Community Service of Johnson County, there are 34,000 people below the poverty limit within Johnson County. Assuming that 2.13 persons per household ratio and combining our 1,447 vouchers with Olathe's 509, it would require 14,000 additional vouchers from HUD to meet this need. Unfortunately, our vouchers are not likely to increase. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Questions of staff. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to address the Commission? This is a public hearing, so be glad to receive any comments. If there's no one to be heard at the public hearing, the public hearing is closed, and the item is back before the Commission. Mr. Osterhaus.
I'll move to approve the proposed fiscal year 2018 streamlined annual public housing authority plan covering the period of 2018 as recommended by the Director of Human Services and approved by the Housing and Community Development Advisory Committee for submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve. Are there any further questions or discussion? There being none, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilet.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number five, resolution number 095-17, and application number NWCU3351. Consider a request from Andrew Belt, applicant landowner, for a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory structure located at 12700 Spoon Creek Road on 5 acres zone RLD residential low-density district.
Ms. Wicklin.
Good morning. This is a request for an oversized accessory structure located near the corner of 127th and Spoon Creek Road, as you can see here on the vicinity map. The applicant is requesting to construct a new approximately 3,900-square-foot detached accessory structure, which includes a 40-by-50 enclosed structure and approximately 1,900 square feet of open-walled lean-to area on three sides of the new structure. You can see this here on the aerials. The property is outlined in yellow. You can see the house, and then there's a garage there that's been demolished, and then is also the location of the new proposed garage. In this case, the enclosed structure does not exceed the allowed square footage of accessory structure on this five-acre parcel. However, it's the open-walled lean-to areas that exceed that allowance and is what requires the need for the CUP. Both planning staff and zoning board are recommending approval with stipulations in a 10-year term for the reasons listed in the resolution. There's really no issues or concerns with this application. And here's just a quick picture of what the bar and garage will look like, and if you have questions, I can answer those.
Questions of staff. Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present? Any comments he would like to make?
I'm present here.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? If there's no one to be heard, is back before the Commission, a motion is in order. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt resolution number 095-17 approving a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory structure located at 12700 Spoon Creek Road for the reasons in subject to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution and the application. And Ms. Wicklin, this comes to us with positive recommendations from the staff, zoning board also?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Ilet.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number six, resolution number 091-17 and 092-17, and application number NWCU3352. Consider a request from Melissa Morris, applicant and landowner, for two conditional use permits to allow an exotic animal, a serval, and to allow kennel for no more than 15 cats and two dogs located at 12240 Moonlight Road.
Mr. Malott.
Good morning. Jeff Malott for the Planning Department. As you can see, the location of this CUP would be just south of 119th Street, west side of Moonlight Road. There are two conditional use permits here. If I could explain a little bit the difference between them and the difference in recommendation that we had, that staff had. The first CUP is a request to keep an African serval cat. There's a photograph here of one of these cats in Africa. They're, they weigh between 17 and 40 pounds, haden body length of 26 to 40 inches long. Standing, they have a shoulder height of 21 to 24 inches. They're very efficient hunters due to their ability to leap up to 10 feet into the air and their ability to swerve and change direction at full speed. This is an exotic animal conditional use permit, which is required within our regulations. The second CUP is for a kennel, not for servals, but for cats, specifically savanna cats, which are a hybrid of serval and a domestic cat. If you've looked at any of the information on these, they're designated by F1 through different higher numbers, our successive generations. F1 is the first-generation mix between a serval and house cat. The United States Department of Agriculture defines wild or domesticated hybrid crosses as domesticated. In 2001, the International Cat Association accepted savanna cats as a registered breed. So, in line with current practice, staff considered savanna cats to be domestic, not exotic. The kennel use, as proposed by the applicant, is generally consistent, we believe, with rural district zoning and the large lots surrounding. And as long as they're not negatively impacted by noises, odors, unsightly views, property damage, intimidation generated by such animals. Excuse me. This kennel use, with the exception of no more than two adult dogs, would be composed entirely of confined indoor cats. It kept as stipulated, the kennel will likely have minimal or no impact on the surrounding properties, and staff and the zoning board both recommended approval of the kennel. Regarding the exotic animal CUP, however, staff relied on outside experts, since we're not animal experts ourselves. I contacted the Topeka, Kansas Zoo, the Omaha, Nebraska Zoo, the Sedgwick County, Kansas Zoo, and they all pointed to one source. His name is Daniel Dembyek. He's the nationally recognized expert on serval husbandry. We consulted with him multiple times by phone. He is the serval program leader for the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, and he is writing the serval husbandry manual to be used by all member zoos in the United States. Dan indicated that servals are in the pet trade in some states, and the state of Kansas does not forbid private ownership. He said that while servals can be held safely by individuals with the proper knowledge and standard of care, they are wild and can be aggressive. If a serval escapes into the community, it could pose a danger to children and small domestic animals. The applicant does propose a two-fence, two-door security, and the applicants indicated that it'll be declawed. Mr. Dembyek said that servals are extremely fast animals and indicated that even without claws, the serval's teeth could pose a danger. Staff relied on Mr. Dembyek's expertise and recommended denial of the exotic animal The zoning board, on the other hand, recommended approval. Among the reasons they gave, it was a vote of three yes, one no, one abstention. The reasons they gave were the serval enclosure is well-designed, there's a GPS device that she plans to put on the serval, and they believe that will ensure the animal's whereabouts are known at all times. The serval will not be allowed outside its enclosure except when transported and with appropriate stipulations, the proposed use will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. The applicant is here to answer questions. She sent me some additional information about the enclosure and the architecture of the building where the cats will be housed. I got it about midnight and have not had a chance to review it, but she said she will have the information here this morning. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What were the stipulations identified by the zoning board to assure the public safety you mentioned?
Okay. The stipulations read as follows. This conditional use permit allows the keeping of one exotic animal, a serval African cat, in conjunction with owner occupancy of a residence on the property. The serval shall be confined to the indoor cat house and outdoor primary and secondary fence enclosures as shown on Exhibit A, except when being transported. The term of the conditional use permit shall not exceed five years, commencing from the date of approval of this resolution. The applicant shall provide the Planning Department a veterinarian certification that the serval is declawed prior to zoning permit approval. For the purposes of this stipulation, declawed shall mean all claws shall be permanently removed from all four of the serval's paws. Five, the applicant shall fit the serval with a GPS collar that is continuously working and monitored at all times for the duration of the conditional use permit. Six, the cat house and primary and secondary fence areas shall be built and maintained in accordance with the site plan attached heretofore as Exhibit A, except as modified by these stipulations. The indoor cat house and outdoor primary and secondary fence enclosures shall be, meet the adopted building and fire codes, and shall be constructed according to the applicant's site plan and according to her statements at the zoning board hearing, which were with double fencing enclosed on all sides and the top, with fencing buried to a depth of two feet, and with a two-door entry system. Seven, the serval areas shall be regularly cleaned, sanitized, and operated in a fashion that prevents the attraction of vermin, the growth of infectious bacteria, the communication of disease, or any other such related health problems. Eight, the serval areas shall be operated in a manner that prevents noise, odors, vermin, infestations, or other objectionable conditions from being a nuisance to neighboring properties. And nine, the removal and disposal of animal and all other food wastes, bedding, dead animals, and debris shall be done on a regular basis and at reasonable intervals. The disposal of these waste materials shall comply with federal, state, and local laws and regulations relating to pollution control. Cleaning the serval facilities and depositing the waste into the applicant's trash would meet this requirement.
Okay. Let me ask you this question. Was there any discussion at the zoning board of a different length of time for the conditional use permit rather than five years? I'm talking about a shorter period of time.
Honestly, I'd have to review the minutes. I don't believe so.
Okay, all right. Other questions? All right, thank you. The applicant present would invite you to the podium. Any comments you'd like to make?
Good morning, and thank you for being here. I know this is probably not something you guys have ever had or maybe don't get very often. I...
Did have a baboon once.
A baboon once.
Not in this setting, somewhere else.
Okay. I've been an animal lover my entire life and have worked with animals my whole life and do a lot of volunteer at shelters and things like that. And animals have been a huge passion of mine, and we bought this land with the understanding that we could own whatever animals, not whatever, but as many animals as we wanted, as long as we had 10 acres or more. And in fact, we were technically kicked out of our last neighborhood because we had more than four cats, and I didn't even know about, there was a law until my neighbors had called the cops on me, because I put my cats on Facebook, and I'm an open book. I, you know, I just let people know how, you know, I roll, and anyway, people know because of Facebook. So, anyway, cops showed up, and they're like, "Yeah, you can't have more than four cats or four dogs." I'm like, "Oh, I didn't know that was a rule." So, then we tried to move, that fell through. Then we tried to get a special use permit over there, that fell through. So, we're like, "All right, well, I guess we have to move." So, we bought this land, thinking, when we worked with the city over in Olathe, because we moved not far from here, they said anything outside city limits in the county, you could have whatever animals, at least domestic, meaning cats and dogs, like no regulations. So, when I went to apply for the serval permit, I was informed that there was a regulation of no more than four cats or four dogs, even in the country, too. And I was like, "Oh, my God." And I was like, oh my gosh, we just moved our whole family for this, and the house is already being built, so now I'm like, all nervous because we already had these animals. We don't have a serval, I don't have a serval, I do have my cats, and so we love them very much. So, anyway, I've worked with the servals for probably three and a half years now. While they are considered a wild animal, they very much behave like a dog, very loyal. They, they mate for life in the wild, so they do develop a really strong bond with their family members and the people who they're raised with. I do have four small children, ages five, seven, nine, and eleven, that all take care of the cats and the dog, the one dog that we have now. They've been around with servals before. I'm not afraid for my children, which, I wouldn't bring an animal in my home which I felt was dangerous to my children. I do have a few F1s, which are, you know, sixty percent serval already. My children handle them, hold them every day. We've never had an incident. The oldest one I have right now, as far as savanna goes, is three years old. They're amazing, wonderful, smart, loyal animals, behave very much like a dog versus a cat. They come to you, you know, when you call them, they play catch, you, they love to swim. They're very, very smart. They're like the best of both worlds. They pee in a litter box, but they behave like a dog, so, so you don't have to take them out like you do a dog, but, so, people are attracted to their personality, and then of course, they like the way they look, too. So, is there other questions that you guys might have for me?
Well, I have, I have a couple of questions in, in, in reading about the, the savanna cat, the hybrid.
Uh huh.
They are expensive, I would say.
They are.
Information indicated that they can be sold for as much as fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars.
Oh, way more than that.
Or more than that. So this really is a business venture. It's not a, a, a household pet type of situation.
It's a mixture of both, yes. We have a lot invested in them, correct? And we love them as pets, but they, it is a business, yes.
Well, let me ask you this. Appreciate your comments and your confidence in the, in the serval cat as a, an animal that can be adequately controlled. The, the investment in the, in the pen or the infrastructure to make sure that the serval animal does not get out, I don't know what that dollar amount is, but would you be willing to consider a conditional use permit of less than five years?
Um, like what, what, what year amount? I mean, it just makes me, I mean-
I guess, I guess my question is, the, the, the investment you would have to make to make sure that the serval cat is secure-
Right. Well, they would be housed in the same environment as my cats, which I'm going to build the enclosures for my cats as well as the serval, so, um, so, I mean, yes, you're right, it is going to be, it, it's a very expensive, more expensive than I anticipated. But, like, are we thinking like two years, or, and then we, we recheck it?
Let's say, let's say two years, and then that gives you, as well as the county and the neighbors, experience, and then we would review that at the end of two years, let's say, for example.
I mean, that's a possibility. I mean, if it's, if it's to get the ball rolling and to make people feel more comfortable, I'm happy to do that. It just makes me nervous agreeing to smaller amounts, because we are dealing with an animal that will bond strong, and it would make me sad to not be able to renew it if something happened, but I don't foresee anything, not, anything bad happening, but I'm happy to do whatever makes you guys feel comfortable.
Okay. All right. Other questions? Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Before we open it up to receive additional comment, Mr. Malott, I know the sheriff, excuse me, was asked to render opinion on this item. Can you share that with us?
Pardon me, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed your question.
My recollection is that the sheriff was asked to render opinion on this activity. Can you share that with us?
Yes, the sheriff's patrol division recommended that the serval permit not be approved. They felt like it would be a danger to the community, and they asked that if it were approved, that they're notified so that they know this is out there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on this item? All right. If there's no one, yes, yes, sir. Come to the podium, state your name and address, we'll be glad to receive that comment.
I live next door. My name is Tom Martin, and I live on one hundred twenty-eight, twenty-eight, six, four, five, one hundred nineteenth Street. And I looked up on the internet, there's at least ten or fifteen states have already outlawed these animals, and there's got to be some reason. I contacted Kansas Fish and Game, but consequently, they haven't got back with me on this yet. So I'd like to pursue this, but I'm totally against anybody raising those African cats in my neighborhood, so.
Thank you. Okay? Thank you. Is there someone else? All right. Was there someone over here? Okay. Yes.
And I'm a close neighbor to Tom.
All right, I'm going to have to ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address, so we can get the comment on the record.
I'm Ramona Allen Brand, and I've lived in my area for fifty years. And animals are always welcome out there, as long as they're taken care of, they're not in the roads, they're not bothering anybody. But these animals, I've read articles recently from a famous artist, I mean actress, and she's in Somalia trying to save those animals to keep them there rather than send them to the United States, because her argument is they're being killed in Amer, in, in our market here. But I know we can't take her word for things, but I look at those animals, and I look at my little, I've got seven little baby grandda, children, and I let them run and play, and I cannot visualize them trying to protect themselves against one of these animals. I feel bad for these animals. I think people in Somalia should have kept their native animals and taken care of them, and I think, think there are efforts to do that, but this came on us pretty fast. I didn't even know about it till about a month ago, and I would very much appreciate it if you would deny this application out of hand. It doesn't belong in our area. These animals are dangerous. I really believe, I've already heard at least one of them out prowling at night, because I turned my lights on for the entire night, and the animal went away. It was not a fox, it was not a wolf, we don't have those. It looked like a big animal with a small head, so, but I didn't go out there, so. Anyway, I would appreciate your supporting my neighborhood, which is one of the best in the county, has the best, some of the best representation, and I love where I live, and my neighbors love where we live. And the Martins have a business, they will probably have to give up their farm, because they won't be able to keep their cattle and whatever, right there with those animals. There's a lot of cattle out there, so. Anyway, I would appreciate anything, any consideration you would give us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, if there's no one else to be heard, the item is back before the commission for consideration.
I have a quick-
Process question. We need to take these conditional use permits and act on them separately, is that correct?
You'll need two votes on them, but you, you can act on them together, if, so if you want to combine them, you can. If you're going to approve them, though, you can vote on them separately or together?
Well, my suggestion would be that we, that we have separate votes and separate motions on, because the request is for two separate conditional use permits, is that correct? All right. Thank you. Mr. Schaefer, did you have a question, a comment?
Mr. Malott, you mentioned that the, the serval would be declawed on all, all four paws, and does that include all the savannas as well, or, help me out on that? And isn't there a motion out there, or isn't there a movement out among cat lovers that they don't declaw their cats? I know both of my daughters have cats, and they don't declaw theirs, and so-
Yeah, well-
I need, I need some information on that, or help on that.
We don't have a stipulation for the savanna cats to be declawed as part of the kennel. There is one for the serval. As far as best practices for declawing of cats, I'm certainly not an expert, but I have heard that there, there is a movement of folks that says that's a bad idea.
Mr. Allen?
Mr. Schaefer, I heard on the radio this morning, the city of Denver passed an ordinance to outlaw declawing cats, and it also, I believe, in California, somewhere they've done it, and it's just because they don't think it's good for the cat to be declawed, but for whatever reason.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, I understand that when we get to this level of emotion, that an applicant's already been through several meetings, and there are probably timelines, and there are things that they're trying to get done to get accomplished, but I would submit that there have been several questions raised here that need to be answered, and it would be my recommendation, as opposed to motioning for an approval or denial, that we remand this back to the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board, simply for time for the applicant to educate their neighbors and possibly us on serval cats in, in the overall, as opposed to an up or down vote sitting here now. I think some education might go a long way in helping me and others get comfortable. I'm not here opposed, but I don't live next to the applicant or where this is going to be located, and I have heard from people that do, and they're very much against it. But there may be some education component that could possibly, at a minimum, at least educate them, as opposed to their resistance or mine out of true ignorance about the animal.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second his motion.
Well, the motion has not been made yet. I would, I would say this, I would also, if, if the motion is made, that we add a, have the zoning board consider a shorter time period, rather than the, rather than the five years-
Agreed.
-for the conditional use permit for the exotic animal. So any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Not Mr. Brown, do you?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do have, I agree with you, Commissioner Brown, on this issue, and as, as you and I have to deal with, at least in our districts, to a large degree, there's, there's always a question of how much overreach and regulation and, and should there be, especially in some of these rural areas? But I, I think for you all, it's, it's a question of the unknown here, and I think if you can have the patience with us, kind of educate us, we can kind of, kind of work, get a better understanding of what, versus just putting it up or down today.
All right. Mr. Brown, did you have a motion?
I do have a motion, Mr. Chairman. I would motion to remand this item back to the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board for further study and to include their contemplation of a reduced period of time for the conditional use permit from five years to two years, and providing time for the applicant to educate their neighbors.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to remand back to the zoning board. Further consideration of the resolutions, as noted. I, I have a question, another question, Mr. Jarrett. My sense is the, the one conditional use permit, there, there is no issue with the domestic cats. The, the issue is in regards to the exotic animal, but it's probably appropriate to send both of them back at the same time?
I think the only question will be whether there's questions about the savanna cats as well as the servals. If not, you can certainly separate them if the only question is about the serval.
Well, I think one is probably depend upon the other, so we will send them both out with the, the, the motion would include both, both resolutions with the emphasis upon the exotic animal portion. Any questions about the motion? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clickum?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Iler?
Aye. Motion carried. Mr. Malott, one question, when would this be back before the zoning board?
We have some standard language to maintain chain of notice, and that's part of it. That is, this application is being returned to the zoning board for further consideration. It will be placed on the agenda of the zoning board at its next regularly scheduled meeting. That meeting is currently scheduled to be held on December eighteenth, seven PM, here in this room.
Okay.
But that date may change. Anyone interested in this application should contact the Planning Department or periodically check the Planning Department website at www.joecov.gov.org to confirm dates and agenda placement for the meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Next item.
Item number seven, application number NWPP/FP3353. Consider a request from CJ Garrett, applicant, and Robert W. Sullivan Trust Landowner for preliminary and final plat for three lots on approximately forty acres, zoned RUR, rural district, in the vicinity of Ninety-Ninth Street and Waverly Road.
Say, Al.
Good morning, Commissioners. The subject forty-acre property is located on the east side of Waverly Road, just south of Ninety-Ninth Street. It's a product of an administrative tract split of a hundred and twenty-acre property approved for an eighty-acre parcel in this forty-acre parcel in July of this year. The subject property is located in the urban fringe of DeSoto. The city boundary is located on the north side of Ninety-Ninth Street and along a portion of the west side of Waverly Road. Waverly Road is designated as a carnet type one arterial, and Ninety-Ninth Street is a local collector road. This is a request to further divide the forty-acre parcel into three new rural lots, two of which would access Ninety-Ninth Street, and one which would access Waverly Road. The proposed layout does not meet the minimum infrastructure requirements. The regulations do not allow new lots to be created with direct access to carnet arterials. The applicant has requested a waiver to allow Lot Three, the southern lot, to be created with direct access to Waverly Road, instead of constructing a local road or having all three of the lots take access to the Ninety-Ninth Street. Lot Two, as you can see, has a highly unusual shape. It's a thirty-foot by six-hundred-and-thirty-foot, half-acre straw. The purpose of the straw is to gain access to a water main located on the west side of Waverly Road, instead of installing a water main along a hundred, along Ninety-Ninth Street. Without this straw, the regulations would require a water main to be extended in Ninety-Ninth Street right away to meet the minimum infrastructure requirements. This went to the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board on November ninth, and after much discussion, the zoning board unanimously recommends approval of the plat and the waiver. Eight reasons were given for the approval of the plat and are included in the summary, and I'll just read the ones that get at the core of their recommendation. The property is in the urban fringe, and the city of DeSoto responded that the lots would be compatible with the low-density residential designation for their future plan and did not have any issue with this plat. Water District Seven does not want to extend a public main along Ninety-Ninth Street to serve one lot and does not allow water mains within private easements. A public water main extended along Ninety-Ninth Street frontage along the plat would not connect it with anything and would require frequent flushing to maintain quality. There's no benefit in that. There's no alternative way to divide the property without extension of a public water main along Ninety-Ninth Street. The appendage is to allow the underground service, and it would not be visible except on the plat document. The land should be used, and given the topography, there is no other way to divide it. They also gave reasons for the waiver. Two of the lots will have access on Ninety-Ninth Street, one with access on the arterial is not extraordinary. A single access for a subdivision with one-quarter mile frontage on Waverly Road located over a thousand feet from the intersection with Ninety-Ninth Street will not cause any problems on the arterial. The alternative design to eliminate the piano key lots on Waverly would not work without the extension of a, of public water main. Staff recommends denial. This property is located in the urban fringe, as you can see, and abuts the city of DeSoto on two sides, and there is a large residential subdivision, large lot residential subdivision immediately north of the proposed plat. Staff's recommendation is about minimum infrastructure and urban fringe. Development pressure is the greatest in the urban fringe. Per the comp plan and the regulations, the urban fringe is where cities are anticipated to grow, and expectations for a more urban development pattern is also the greatest, and where minimum infrastructure is of the highest priority. The proposed layout requires a waiver from the minimum infrastructure for access and includes that highly unusual straw to avoid installing another minimum infrastructure requirement for water. requirement for water. We've discussed carnip and direct access quite a bit here recently, so I won't go into that this morning. There are maintenance and land use concerns with the straw, and the half acre is not buildable, and as one of the zoning board members said, it will make for strange fence lines. The zoning board struggled with the straw shape, and staff struggles with that shape, and as Jay said last week, this is highly, highly unusual. Not a lot shape expected in the urban fringe, where there are water mains so close by. There are eight inch and six inch water mains and fire hydrants to the west, along Waverly, and to the north, within the developed residential subdivision. So without the highly unusual straw shape, this subdivision would be required to extend a public main, or request another waiver. I checked with the fire department and building codes, fire hydrants are not required for fire protection for the development of isolated lots. That's what the proposed lots are viewed as by the building regulations, because of their size. So this proposal is for the creation of isolated lots in the urban fringe. Homes constructed on the proposed lots would not have the same fire protection as homes located immediately to the west and to the north, where there are fire hydrants. So the proposed subdivision in the urban fringe does not provide the minimum infrastructure required for even more remote areas of the county. This is a development pattern, a three lot development pattern, which meets the minimum infrastructure. It does require investment of installing a water main, but there's no waivers required. This is something more like what the applicant had proposed with two eleven acre lots and a seventeen acre lot. Can still be accomplished with the amount of frontage and location. Subdivision and development are not just about access and minimum infrastructure, though. It's about a lot more. Commissioner Askcraft isn't here today, but I anticipated that he might ask what is meant by a more urban development pattern. The subdivision across the street on the north side of Ninety-Ninth Street is a great example of what's more urban development pattern. It's one that doesn't, there's no sewers available to this area. I checked, and it may one day be served with sewers by the city of DeSoto, but they're not on any of their plans, and they're not projected within a reasonable time period. But this subdivision to the north has two acre and larger lots, streets, potable water, and fire protection, all the minimum infrastructure required by the county regulations in this type of development. It connects, this is a development pattern that the comp plan and the regulations call for in the urban fringe. It connects with adjacent property, undeveloped property, and provides for future growth. With that, I stand for any questions you have for staff. The applicant, Mr. CJ Garrett, is here this morning, as well as Mr. Lewis, who would like to purchase and develop this forty acre property for his family.
What was the, what was the communication from the, from the fire district? If, if there's future requirements for additional water mains, who would pay the cost? Would that be spread against those in the district, or the landowner, or?
The fire district doesn't provide the water. The water district indicated that the extension of the public main would be more by the developer, and in this location, extending an eight inch main from the main on Waverly would cost somewhere between forty and sixty thousand dollars.
But did they have an opinion as to, if the waiver recommended is granted, would a future developer have to pay that cost, or would it be spread amongst the constituents of the water district?
They provide service on a request basis, so if an adjacent property owner wanted water, potable water, the adjacent property owner would have to bring water from wherever it's currently at, to serve their property. So if the adjacent property to the east wanted to have water, potable water, they would be responsible for bringing a public main from the existing main on Waverly, all the way across the front of this property to their property.
Okay, just for the record, this would require a variance be granted by the commission, by the county.
A waiver.
A waiver. And in the past, when waivers have been granted, or variances have been granted, those variance considerations are reviewed by the board of zoning, or the zoning boards, and as in this particular case, the variance comes to us with a recommendation to be granted. Is that right?
Yes, they recommended approval of the waiver.
And that's the similar practice that has been used in the past on any project?
That is correct.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, thank you very much. Is the applicant present? Any comments you'd like to make?
I can locate my flash drive here. CJ Garrett, 14224 West 67th Street. I'm going to pull this up really quick for you guys. I guess as I'm pulling this up, I'll touch on a couple of points that Ms. Hayhaw had made, and one of the key things with this particular property is, this is not a development opportunity for anybody. Jeff Lewis, who's here, kind of assisting me on it, Jeff and his family are looking to relocate from Shawnee County, and ultimately, the seventeen acres as proposed is going to be the primary residence for Jeff and his wife. The two remaining lots are going to be, hopefully, the future homes for his children as they move down with time. Can I pull one of these? Well, I think we just all four, so they're all accounted for. Okay, sorry there. Okay, so once again, as Pam said, that this property's forty acres is kind of rooted from a tract split that we had approved back in July, splitting this forty acres off of a hundred and twenty acre tract at Ninety-Ninth and Waverly. So this is the piece as it stood whenever we purchased it. One thing to notice on this is, I know we always talk about carnip, and we talk about driveway access, and the intrusion onto arterial roadway networks, there's multiple home sites that are already across from this property, there's already mailboxes, there's existing, the school bus already stopped there, the mailman already stopped there, and so So one of the reasons for the layout on this, that we want to make very clear, is that topographically, the way this site lines out, there's a big giant ravine on the northeast corner. So the intention with the layout of the ten acre lots to the north, and the seventeen acre lot to the west, was to provide access to three lots, because really, topographically, it was a struggle to even design that, you know, from an engineering standpoint. You know, we're six hundred feet off of, off of the intersection here at Ninety-Ninth and Waverly, we're going to be holding our driveway tight on that lot number two, just to meet that requirement, and getting around the topo. The other thing about, we talk about having a through street, and having, if it was truly a development, and we wanted to put in three acre lots, and rezone it, go through all that trouble. Once again, topographically, you can't run a street through this property unless you bring the street in off of Waverly, which essentially, all we're doing is exchanging a street for the driveway that we're asking. We talked about the water district a little bit. So whenever I kind of started this project with Jeff, the first three people I spoke with were, number one, Mike Brungart, with the city administrator and city engineer for DeSoto. I know Mike, I've done, you know, I've brought other projects to him and worked with him in the past, and knowing what I know, he is the immediate neighbor of this property, and being in charge of the city, I wanted his input. Right out of the gate, he looked at this project, he said, "We don't have any future growth unless you guys are going to voluntarily annex this to the city of DeSoto." Even at that point, through their future growth maps, it's a hundred percent compliant with what they foresee in the future. The very next person we met with was the planning staff, and kind of, you know, put the idea around. One of the things that came about on that meeting was the lack of the water infrastructure, the scattered water infrastructure. So the very next phone call we made was with Alan Sotart with the water district. Jeff Lewis and I actually went and met with Alan, and showed him this proposed plat, tried to figure out a way to make this work, based on the water infrastructure. As that transpired through, within the week, Alan actually emailed us, and one of his things that he wanted to note was that, from his perspective, the best solution for this property, to get the three lots, and to be able to, you know, end up with what we're looking to do here, was to grant this appendage or this straw to Waverly, which granted them enough space so that they could set the water meter box on the property. On the plat, it's going to be deemed to no access, we're not going to have a driveway through it, we're not going to have any intrusions onto Waverly off of it, it's simply for utility purposes, that's it. The reason why, as he notes in the email that you see here, is because we cannot put infrastructure on an easement. If we could, we would do so, and it wouldn't look like this. Us as the applicant and as Jeff, we don't love to design a lot, too, either. It's not usual, right? I'll show you some illustrations here in the future that shows you that it's more usual than we think, actually. But in this email, you can see that Alan is the one who actually presented this attachment down below, which is this map, which was his design for accomplishing what we're looking to do. And the reason being, as you can see here, the blue line in the northeast corner there is the water line that's existing. The blue line is an inch and a half main. From the inch and a half main, it's not even feasible, or it wouldn't even function if we extended that inch and a half all the way up to service the lots. You would have to extend the six inch main or greater to get the flow rate uphill to these lots. And the reason why Alan sided with us on this is simply because, with that main being all laid down there, there's roughly two thousand feet of a total main extension that we would have to pay, private sector, Jeff Lewis, as the buyer, would have to pay for this to get one lot. That's all it would service. Even if creating the loop, it doesn't benefit anybody. You loop the water line, it's one lot, that's all it facilitates. There's an eight inch main on the west side of Waverly, it's far, far more sufficient enough than what we need to facilitate the three meters that we're putting in. The Cherishoke subdivision to the north only has a six inch meter that facilitates So, and I know that in the staff's report, I didn't really come up on this, but one of the things that has been brought to our attention is the fact that by having that appendage, and by having the six hundred plus feet going back there, that it is irregular. Looking at the overall area, and just pulling up a quick Google Earth, you can see, in this neighborhood, and in this area, people don't buy state lots and put their houses on the road anyways. So yes, we are asking to have a water meter box coming off of Waverly, and running a private water line to the home, which is going to be roughly eight hundred feet back, but it doesn't matter, because everybody around there is doing the same thing. Even if we ran the water line off of Ninety-Ninth Street, it would still be eight hundred feet, based on the placement of the home. This is, this is going to kind of show you, so here's our subject property, as indicated, and I know that our lot layout, like I said, it's not the most aesthetically pleasing thing in the world, but this is the square mile around there. So you can see, there's many other quirky lot configurations that have taken place, and I'm, I'm not here to advocate any of that, and I know that we're trying to change moving forward, but point being, unless you're going to get on AMES, and click on this particular property, nobody in the community is ever going to see the shape of this. It's strictly for utility purposes, and aesthetically, it doesn't affect anything. This is another one with just more similar properties, that's down on the previous applicant's type area, at Hundred Nineteenth and Hundred Fifteenth and Moonlight, to where they've granted all these, and I know these are true flag-shaped lots, but this, similar thing. So they're already out there, they're already existing. Then another thing that I wanted to point out is, we continue to talk about carnip, and allowing the accesses onto Waverly, and I understand that, but one thing that we need to consider is, the only reason why this is not allowed right now is because it's a three lot plat. We could take this same project, and we could make it Lewis Farms, a two lot plat, and then this, this would be the outcome. Because the subdivision regulations state that as long as it's a two lot plat on existing zoning, you're allowed to have driveways that take direct access. That's what carnip plan states. Carnip plan does not state you cannot take access onto an arterial. It states, all it did was it changed the requirements on the frontage requirements, and the distance between driveways. It went from a three hundred and thirty foot frontage to a four hundred foot frontage on a type one arterial. That's what we have here. So essentially, by us asking for two driveways off of Ninety-Ninth Street, we're the lesser of the two evils, if you want to call it that, and in addition to that, what I want to point out is, in the tract split process, we've already been awarded the driveway. So when we split this forty off of the eighty, we already get a driveway onto Waverly. So we're not asking for any more driveways than we've already been awarded. And in the staff's report, they note that, let me see here, so, "The cumulative effect of allowing new lots on carnip arterials pose a threat to the arterial system and community at large." They've already granted us that on a, on a tract split administratively, that you guys never even saw. So by us, all we're doing is, we're taking it from a forty piece with one driveway onto an arterial, to a three lot plat with one driveway onto an arterial. And another thing that I wanted to point out is, in the staff's report, it says, "The shape of lot two burdens the city of DeSoto, Water District Seven, and surrounding property owners." Well, not only do I disagree with that as the application, obviously, DeSoto and Water District Seven does not agree with that statement as well. They've had many, many looks at this. They were the first ones to be notified on this deal. They've seen this from when it was penciled out on a napkin, all the way to where, what you have in front of you today, as the engineered plat for Lewis Farms. So Mike Brungart, as a city administrator, city engineer, would never, never support or favor this as a neighbor, if it was going to hinder or jeopardize any infrastructure or future growth for his city. And Alan, so it's our same thing, he would never support this, favor this, and participate in the design of what you have in front of you, if it was going to hinder any of their future growth. When it comes to the water district, the main concern, and the stance that Alan had on it, was, it's a fifty-plus thousand dollar bill to front this water line down Ninety-Ninth Street. It doesn't, doesn't help anybody, that's the fact of it. In addition to that, Alan looks at it, says, "Hey, this is kind of a spotty water infrastructure that was put in place many, many years ago. As the water department, we're not going to ask an individual to carry the cost at sixty, seventy bucks a foot, for this existing water line, six hundred and fifty feet to the east of the property, all the way across other landowners' property lines, that they've never had to pay for, and go all the way to Waverly to loop the water line." Because, in theory, if all these, if all the rules and regulations stand true, that water line should have been brought up to the eastern property line of this particular piece many, many years ago. If that was the, if that was the situation, we would be in a way different place, and we would be willing, as Mr. Lewis said in the zoning board, we'd be willing to cover the cost of the water line from the eastern part of this property to Waverly, because it makes sense. But to foot the bill for an extra six hundred feet, doesn't make sense for anybody. Not the water district, as Alan said, not for Jeff, as the individual, not for anybody. And moving forward, I know, Ed, you asked a question, say in twenty years, this gets redeveloped, after Jeff and his family have lived there for many years, and enjoyed the land, if it ever got redeveloped, new water infrastructure would be paid by the developer. There's no public cost that would get taken onto this, because all new development gets paid for by the developer. So in no way is this ever going to affect anybody in the future, if the water line is, needs to be extended. In addition to that, in our zoning board meeting, Jeff actually agreed, hey, in the future, if there's some participation agreement with the zone, or with the water district and neighbors, whatever, to extend this, for whatever reason, he's happy to chip in and pay his part. It's not a big deal. So with that, and just given everything that you've seen today, DeSoto supports the project as a neighbor, Water District Seven supports the project, they've participated in the project, your zoning board unanimously decided to approve the project, based on everything at hand, we just hope that you guys can have a vote in our favor, I guess. Thank you.
May I ask you, do you have written communication from the city of DeSoto and, and the water district that could go on the record?
I can provide you the email that Alan sent me, I believe, in the past. Ms. Hayhaw had an email from Mike Brungart stating that it was compliant with their future growth map as well. I saw that in the zoning meeting.
Thank you. Would request that that be done.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, if there's no one to be heard, are there any further questions, either the applicant or the staff? All right, Mr. Brown, do you have a motion?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt a preliminary and final plat for three lots to be known as Lewis Farms, and approve a minimum infrastructure waiver from the requirement that lots in new subdivisions shall not have access directly onto carnip-designated arterial street, and instead allow Lot Three to have direct access to Waverly Road, subject to the stipulations recommended by the zoning board.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the application, as recommended by the zoning board. I'm going to vote in favor of this, based upon the fact that the property does abut the city limits of DeSoto, and as the record will indicate, they do not have an issue, and that the water district also does not have an issue with the current or future and that the Water District also does not have an issue with the current or future regards to the water supply source or water lines. Any other comments?
All right, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Eller.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number eight, resolution number 071-17, consider adopting amendments to the Johnson County zoning and subdivision regulations concerning minor changes to clarify, refine, and update existing regulations, and consider adopting a position statement to guide county staff in the review and processing of matters pertaining to agriculture and agritourism.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you. The planning commission considered and discussed the board's directive regarding farm wineries and a position statement regarding agricultural and agritourism uses. The planning commission issued their recommendation at their business session on October 24th, and they submitted, and the recommendation was submitted to the board of county commissioners by November 1st, which was requested by the directive. The first planning commission recommendation is to delete farm wineries as a recommended zoning amendment and to adopt the remainder of the proposed zoning amendments. The second planning commission recommendation is to adopt a revised position statement for the review of agricultural and agritourism uses. Their recommendation is as follows. If the use of the property has received registration for agritourism in Kansas, then the county will recognize that the use and its related events and activities are exempt from zoning regulations by the county. This vote was unanimous by the planning commission. The original wording in the directive proposed a three-tier review. The planning commission's recommendation basically only adopts the first of the three parts. County staff supports the directive in its entirety because it provides greater clarity and direction to the public and county staff regarding the review of agricultural and agritourism uses. The following several slides highlights the elements of the directive that the staff feels should be put back into the proposed position statement to provide this clarity. So the first tier of review, in the black, was adopted by the, or recommended by the planning commission. So if the use has received state registration for agritourism, then the use and its related events are exempt from the zoning regulations, with two exceptions. And the planning commission recommended not to include these two exceptions within the directive. And from here on, in the red, is what staff recommends to be put back into the position statement. These are the two exemptions. County will enforce public safety codes and regulations to protect public attending events. Staff believes that it's important to let the public know that we will be looking at public safety. The second exemption is that the county will object and may seek enforcement against events exceeding some threshold, like the rock concert mentioned by the court, and staff feels it's important to let the public know that there are limits to the activities The second tier of review within the directive asserts that if agricultural use, if there is an agricultural use but it's not registered as an agritourism use with the state, then that agricultural use and events supporting the agricultural purpose are considered exempt from the zoning regulation. But the use must meet the same public safety standards that we talked about earlier. And within the directive, the third tier of review is that if property is used as an event center but without agritourism registration or an underlying agricultural use, in other words, that it doesn't have any of the exemptions for agriculture or agritourism that we've been talking about, then the use is subject to zoning regulations. So in general, staff supports the language for the position statement in the directive in its entirety. There's a purpose behind it, and that's to communicate to the public and staff what to expect so that there's no misunderstanding. Associated with this item are two resolutions and two motions. The motions are provided to you at your seat. And this is what it looks like. It's a memorandum to the board from planning staff. So the first directive is, sorry, resolution is resolution number 7117. Here is the motion, that suggested motion that would adopt this resolution, which approves minor amendments to the zoning regulations but does not include the farm wineries. Here's the second motion that would adopt resolution number 7917, which approves a position statement to address agricultural and agritourism-related activities as set forth in the directive. Thank you.
Clarification, the portion of the commission's recommendation that was not recommended by the planning commission, again, related to the public safety code and what other?
The exemptions. When you say that, I'm sorry, could you repeat?
The planning commission did not completely, or did not recommend full adoption of the requirements that were sent to them.
Correct.
They suggested removing the public safety code requirements?
Yes.
And what were the other? Was there other?
Sure.
Portion that they suggested be removed?
Yes. So the only part that they recommended for approval, and it was a unanimous recommendation, was that if you're a registered agritourism use, then you're exempt.
I'm asking about the exceptions.
Yeah. And then here's the exemptions. The first was the public safety, and then the second was that the county will object to some, certain types of events that exceed some kind of threshold.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right.
I do have a question.
Yes, Mr. Schaefer.
These exceptions are not included in either one of these two minutes, or they are, or are they not? I want to make sure I understand that.
In the motions, in the resolutions, these exceptions are included in the resolution to adopt the position statement. What's included in the resolution to adopt the position statement was what was set forth in the directive, which was basically everything that we talked about.
Is that clear?
I think so.
So motion, the two motions that have been suggested, would one or both include the items that were recommended to be eliminated by the planning commission? The first motion approves minor amendments to the zoning and subdivision regulations. The second motion relates to the position statement. As proposed to you, it is the complete position statement with all three parts of it, whereas the planning commission only recommended a portion of the first part. So if you pass the motion that has been recommended to you by staff, that resolution, it will adopt the entire position statement containing all of the parts that were originally proposed.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you for that. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm a contractor, that's what I do for a living, so I'm going to ask you a couple of questions that hopefully you've got answers to, or there's somebody behind you that has them, so.
I was going to say, I'm a planner, so.
I understand. I'll bet somebody in this building's got an answer for me. What is the exact and specific code we're talking about? When it says we're referencing enforcing code and regulations, what is the code we're talking about enforcing?
Let me.
He's talking about the public safety.
On the public safety component. What is the code?
To answer that question, I would need our building official, Anish Vardapur, who is not here today. But there are two memos in your material from Anish Vardapur, and I believe that he references that code. I don't know if you saw that. I'm going to take a peek right now.
Well, I'm assuming that that would be the existing building codes. I mean, that have been previously adopted, yes.
That's what I was looking for, okay? And within, as a contractor, within the building code, I have a relatively broad and relatively deep understanding of how code works and how it can be or cannot be, may not be, applied. My interest in seeing public safety be a component of this resolution centered around, in prior discussions at the deus here, and in my thought process, centered around truly public safety, but at the most basic level. Exit lights, power goes off, lights that come on battery-operated, doors that open out with crash bars, electrical service panel inspections. I'm not interested in enforcing an HVAC component within the code, or for that matter, even plumbing code. There may be a requirement for a number of porta-potties on site, but I'm not interested in requiring bathrooms and flowing water and septic tanks. I have great reservation about the broadness of enforced public safety codes. Huge reservations about that, to the point that I would not be supportive of this until there is a much more clear definition of exactly what that means. I'm concerned that mission creep, and as a builder, having built several thousand houses, I have seen this occur, there is a never-ending mission creep that occurs within the codes community and enforcement, in their mind, in the name of furthering the public's safety, but from the landowner's side, a further erosion of their rights as a property owner. And I'm not interested in seeing that happen, and I'm not interested in having to fight that battle. I would rather have that conversation now and have a minimum understanding of what public safety codes means exactly, by section within the code book. And Mr. Vardapur, I'm sure could provide that for us.
Well, respectfully, Mr. Brown, I think what you're asking for is a much, much broader discussion and potential amendments to the building code in regards to public safety aspects, which is going to take a lot longer and a lot more evaluation than just a few minutes from this deus. I respect the, you know, the approach that in the development community and public safety codes or other building codes, there can be differences of opinion, you know, as far as that's concerned, and those differences, I'm sure, might continue to present themselves. But I think the overall basis for requiring public safety features in an event space, I'll put it that way, where the public is going to be invited and the public does have the expectation that it is a safe environment, you know, just as an example, we had the recent Halloween house, and there was no water access to that house. And I think the staff did the right thing in working with the fire, the fire district, water was provided on a temporary basis in case of a fire. So, you know, there, as well as any code is written, there is always a potential exception. So I'm comfortable that, you know, the consistent enforcement of those public safety codes needs to be carried out, quite frankly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do have, this issue, for some reason, we've been mandated by the state legislature as far as was what agritourism is about and what can and cannot happen, and it's been pretty much mandated by the state that if it's business of agritourism, the county has essentially no control over that issue. However, and I think what we're trying to do is recognize that, and the planning commission has basically wanted to ensure that our codes and so forth recognize that, and for that part, I agree with here. I think that's what we're doing here. But I guess, and I've always assumed, that when it comes to building structures, and if we call it building codes and things like this, we do, for the purpose of safety, have all the responsibilities from monitoring to ensuring that is all being done and consistent to whatever codes we have on the books. As far as safety goes, again, if there are issues relative to public safety, our sheriff's office has the right to step in as necessary. I think the concern I'm having, and I don't know if you feel the same way, Commissioner Brown, on this, is that we seem to be putting so much attention on this public safety and building code issue, and in my own mind, is that we're not changing anything relative to that. It's staying just the way it is. We have a responsibility to protect the public, whether it's in buildings or events or whatever it may be. But what we're doing, we're drawing so much attention here, it's causing a lot of questions on, is there another agenda here? And I think that's where I'm kind of scratching my head here. It seems like this is such, we've turned this into such a complicated issue here that I think it's raising suspect with probably those that have been out in the community and have had to deal with this over the last number of months. So I'm trying to figure out in my own mind, how do we get beyond this point? Is it as simple as approving this and life goes on? Or, and I'm wondering that if all of a sudden we start digging into the whole public safety and building code issue, we may be opening up more cans of worms that really is getting us totally away from, you know, where we need to be going. So I'm just raising that concern.
Respectfully, I think there's a simple answer to that question, and that is, you need to be upfront, and this specifically identifies to any applicant that public safety codes will be applied so that there's no question that any applicant can come back and say, "Well, I didn't know. I didn't know, but we put it in the regulation." It may be redundant, but at least it provides upfront notification, and I think that's the reason it's there.
And I guess that's, and I appreciate what the staff is trying to do and get this thing in place and trying to at least be transparent upfront, that we're not going to change anything else except for we're abiding by the agritourism rules. And in that, I can support that, but I think all this conversation and discussion is just causing a lot of suspect here unnecessarily, so.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Allen?
I'm just going to ask our county attorney, Mr. Jared. I know there's an attorney general's opinion stating that we may not be able to regulate building codes, but my understanding is that's his opinion. That has not, if someone chooses to challenge that, the final decision would be by a court.
Yeah, the attorney general has rendered an opinion, but that opinion is an attorney opinion, not a court decision, but it also always has to be put into context. You have to figure out, okay, what is the building that it's being applied to and what are the activities or uses that are in that building? And his opinion dealt with one specific type of activity, so it doesn't necessarily give us the breadth of understanding that we need, and what we're going to have to do is look at, what's the building, what is it proposed to be used for, if it is registered as agritourism, how do we deal with it, what are the events intended to be conducted under there? If there are events where public's going to be brought, what are the life safety features that we need to look at in order to ensure that public safety codes and regulations are appropriately applied to protect the public who are attending events there? It's not so much that we're dealing with building codes to ensure that the building meets all applicable requirements, it's more that the building, when it's being used for public purpose, is in fact safe, and that certain code requirements are in place to ensure that activities that go on there provide at least a reasonable element of protection for the public.
And my point would be, I don't want a two-tier system into county. Again, we're a county of nearly 600,000 people, and... Again, we're a county of nearly 600,000 people, and if someone is able to construct a structure and maybe not meet or ignore building codes, if that structure was built in any of the cities in the county that would require all the building codes to be adhered, would be my concern. So, I know we've went through a lot on this agritourism. I think that's all been hopefully settled, but this building code, to me personally, is something I want a direct answer on, and if we have to go to a different source. And again, I get back to is that if someone has one of these events, and I know there's facilities out there that maybe could hold 500 people, and if the lights go out or we have some type of serious incident that, you know, at least minimum public safety codes were met, I think it's important, and I understand there may be some frustration on that, but I think as an elected official, I don't think, that's one of the highest things that I want to protect is making sure that the public is safe in any of these type of facilities unless we're told otherwise. So, and I know it may be frustrating to somebody, but I think it's, in my opinion, very important that these buildings meet, you know, public safety codes. So, thank you.
Well, I guess, in my opinion, whether or not this item is put back in, the public safety and building codes will be enforced, even if the recommendation of the Planning Commission to remove this particular section. But I think it's important that, again, that we be transparent to all those who approach this type of activity and upfront, they need to be aware of what the requirement would be. Chairman? Excuse me, yes.
I'm going to support this as it moves forward here, but here's the issue I'm putting on the table, and the reason I'm supporting this. We've dealt with this agritourism issue long enough. We need to give the businesses that are dealing with this an opportunity to settle down, deal with their businesses, and move forward, and not have the fear that we're going to constantly get our fingers involved in this. As far as the concerns, as I said earlier, relative to the public safety and the building code issue, as I said, I don't believe it's our intention, or has been our intention, that we're changing the business practices that we've had at this point. But my comment to those businesses that are out there, I understand if you feel like there's going to be an overreach or a push forward, and if that's the case, or if we see that movement happening from the staff or whatever, I will be coming out pretty aggressively in response to that, and I would like to know if that's the case.
Okay. Mr. Ostranovs?
Don, this is a question for you. You'll have to forgive me because this has gone on so long, I don't remember the exact timeline, but there was a, something I believe in one of the court cases about if you're on something that has agritourism, you accept a certain amount of liability, that you'll be doing farm things. And I don't remember the exact wording, but doesn't that alleviate us as the county from some of these code violation-type things if it's dependent on those who are visiting to take some personal responsibility, both the business owner and the person visiting, that there are farm-related things there, and it may not be, you know, as safe as walking through a shopping mall or something?
The Agritourism Promotion Act provides that if the property is registered and the event falls within the registered agritourism and the property is posted, then the property owner conducting the event does not have liability for folks coming onto the property that may be injured while they're participating in that event. That's not necessarily the same as should they all be there and an activity occur where a fire is started and there is no means to do fire suppression when for certain activities there should have been adequate water for fire suppression. So, it's not necessarily one and the same, a direct correlation. You'd have to look at what it was that caused the public safety issue versus if I go to an event that's on an agricultural property, do I assume some of the risk of walking around in a barn or having those kind of things happen while I'm there, which would be different than if I were going to, you know, regular commercial-type activity? So, there are limits to the liability, but there are still concerns about, is the property safe for the drawing of the public?
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. I've got two points. One is that our chief counsel just wandered directly into the weeds that I'm concerned about us mission creeping into, and that is, there came the word, "fire suppression." You're talking about an incredibly expensive proposition in an agricultural setting where you're using water in a building that then has to be heated all year at whatever the temperature is to keep the water lines from freezing. You are heaping on expenses with, in my opinion, a lack of understanding of all of the unintended consequence. That is why I am not in favor of a complete and uniform across-the-board application of the code book to this particular use. To restate my position to make sure there is clarity, I am not supportive of uniformly and across-the-board pushing forward that every agricultural agritourism use of a building shall comply with all of our local building codes. I am not supportive of that at all. I am very supportive of the fact that the public, I believe, has an expectation to a level, a minimum level, but some level of expectation that there is some amount of safety component built into a building. A building where weddings are being held or where equestrian events are occurring or at a winery are not sleeping events. The people, I think it's rational to assume the people attending those events are awake, and if there's a fire, I think it's also rational to assume that they want to get out. This comes back to my point about crash bars and doors that open out and emergency lighting. I'm not interested in seeing the component about fire suppression and the rest of the code that gets kicked in. So, in my mind, there is a point of demarcation and delineation in saying, "I'm supportive of some public safety," but I am not supportive of the entire code, building code, being applied to these buildings, any of the buildings, but especially in a retrofit scenario.
All right. Thank you.
Amen.
Mr. Schaefer?
There's something about the word "uniform" that you said, and I agree with Mr. Allen. To differentiate from the county to the cities doesn't make any sense to me, and to dissect the uniform building code to meet your request, I think, would be something that would take no more or less than one or two years to do that. If you've tried to resolve the issues in the uniform building code, which is that thick, to meet your criteria, I think, would be something to be very difficult to do. The word "uniform" to me is very important. Why is the county different than Preville?
Because it is unzoned and it's the unincorporated part of the county versus the city.
But we have responsibilities to all of the county, and that's where I'm going to vote for this, and I'm ready to make the motion if anybody else.
Well, we need to receive public comment, if there is public comment. So, at this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the commission on this item, why, you're welcome to come to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll be glad to receive that information.
Kirk Bergren, 11917 Gillette Street, Overland Park. The first question I have is, I never did understand what the resolution, I'd love that read before you actually voted on it, and what the wording is that is supposed to be used. I couldn't quite understand from the first time this came up here, and it went back to the Planning Commission, and then, I guess now, when they had their recommendations, it came up here, they're wanting to change it. So, I don't even know what the two or three different votes are. I know Mr. Schaefer asked. I would like it read exactly what the minor changes accepts are read to us so that I can actually understand what you're voting on. As far as Attorney General's opinions, the Attorney General is the chief legal officer of the state, and he is to defend the county on just about everything, except he is also charged with, and I gave you all this in a brief, he is also charged with writing opinions, and it's supposed to be unbiased. He looks at the case law, he looks at the legislative action, and he writes his opinions based on, and he's not just another lawyer, he is the chief lawyer. He is very highly respected and should be, and his opinion should matter, and I don't think he makes just spurious statements or Attorney General opinions. They're highly researched so that when he gives his opinion that an agricultural building is exempt from building codes, he doesn't make it on a whim. He looks at all the case law, he looks at all the legislation that is passed, and that's why he makes those recommendations. And that's why there are several Attorney General opinions that are not just this Attorney General, but go back through three or four that I can be aware of, all the way back to Stevens, all the way back to '79. So, when they say this, they're very consistent in that agricultural buildings, if it is deemed an agricultural building, it is exempt from building codes. Now, public safety is very important, and no one wants to have the business that has a safety issue and the next day you're out of business because it's pretty self-regulating at that point, and you are liable. The agritourism law does not exempt you from negligence, from gross negligence. So, if you, you know, have a building that's falling down, if you have all the doors padlocked and opening inward, and something occurs, you will be held liable. You cannot pass that off as limiting liability. The Agritourism Liability Act is actually based off of the equine exemption. If you read 60-something, 4,001, I think, I don't think about that, but it's the same law. It exempts these horse facilities from people coming out, falling off a horse. Horses are inherently dangerous, or they're not, but I mean, they're saying, things can happen, you're six feet in the air, and they get spooked. You're still not liable, okay, unless you were doing something grossly negligent. Both of them are the same. And if I understand this, we're going to pass the resolution that the equines, their buildings are, we're recognizing those as agriculture, and they're exempt from anything. People can be in there, they can have horse shows, your granddaughters can be there riding horses, and we're exempting them from all building codes. But now, we're going to, I think, if we get to read this resolution, we're going to trade off every other agritourism business. So, you know, someone has got a pumpkin patch or even a smaller facility than myself where people just come up to a building, now all of a sudden, that's got to meet IBC code. Okay? And since I don't have to register an agritourism business with the county, how are we going to regulate all the old ones versus new construction? Is this new construction only that has to be IBC, or does everyone else have to have their building torn apart, engineered by an architect, and then rebuilt? The reason a lot of these, that Kansas has liberal agricultural exemptions is to spare the family farmer from overreaching government. Now, what can be done? It comes down to, and if you read in our court case, the question was asked directly or was stated by your counsel that said, although there is the ag exemption for the building or for agriculture, we think, the second part of our code, I think it's your chapter 50, is saying that we have police powers, and the Bergrens never said that they were exempt from police powers, and she made quite an argument for that, that we had police powers, and for everyone else, police powers means we can do building codes. We can ask for fire, it's not just a policeman coming out, it's all of the safety, public safety, health, and welfare. Well, in closing arguments, in the very last page of the court's decision, they specifically said, "You cannot rule indirectly what you cannot regulate directly," meaning, since you can't regulate agricultural activities, you can't start imposing police powers on them. And that's, all that's just written there. I gave that all to you. Lisa Wenzel's statement, her argument, the judge's rebuttal to it or asking questions, her final arguments, and then the court's decision. It all said that you can't do that. You do not have those police powers. So, I have a solution, however. Why don't we do this the right way instead of making up rules that are against state law? Why don't we get a legislative change? It's fairly simple. They do it all the time. They amend whatever regulations, and I'll bet you, they never thought of some of these agricultural activities or agritourism activities that have buildings involved, no one thought deep enough into it. That's why they amend legislation. So, somebody go up to the legislature, do this properly, legally, and say, amend the agricultural exemption or the agritourism exemptions so that we cover safety, public safety, health, and welfare at some level. Right now, you don't have that authority. As much as I agree that public safety is important, you do not have that power, and what you're doing is illegal. To pass something that is not legal by the state legislature, you should not be passing an ordinance that you're going to lose on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, if there's no one else to be heard?
Mike Jensen, 12507 East Butterfield Place, 15665 Moonlight Road, and Concerned Citizens for Responsible Government would like to weigh in on this, and I want to just reiterate, part of your own code of ethics, that you should uphold, this is standard 201, you should uphold the Constitution laws and regulations of the United States, the state of Kansas, and never be a party to their evasion. As I've watched this, it looks to me like that you're very close to being a party to evasion of state law. Agritourism, by definition, is agriculture open to the public. It just is. It's an agricultural event. So, when you try to regulate it and say that it's just, these are minor changes, these are not minor changes, and this is an example of government overreach. If I were these people, I'd be terrified of the way you want to get your fingers into this. The state court or the courts already told you, they're agritourism, leave them alone, and here you come again. Mr. Click, I think your point was well-made, that here we go again. What are you so afraid of for these people? A rock concert, really? The other thing I'd like to say, Mr. Jarrett made a comment about context. The context has already been established. It's agritourism's the context. When you start talking about all kinds of other contexts, you're broadening the scope of what you're allowed to do. So, that's all I can really speak intelligently on about this, but we've looked at it, we've looked at it extensively, and we really don't feel like this is necessary. Why do you need this? Why do you need this? I think it absolutely speaks to meddling in these people's lives. Are you going to regulate a farmhouse now, require a sprinkler system if somebody's hatching chicks in their basement? Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
Julie Bergren, 11917 Gillette Street, Overland Park. This has been debated for four years. The Planning Commission has twice sent to you what their suggestion was. They've studied it extensively, they've had speakers, they've had the Department of Agriculture come, they've had the Department of Wildlife come. You've seen the court case. The court case says agritourism is agriculture. Otherwise, it would be called tourism. Therefore, you have no zoning and no police powers over it. You were all sent the case, you were all sent the transcript. So, it's very, very plain. I could tell you about the thousands and thousands of dollars that we have been forced to defend agriculture, and we are discriminated against. The Department of Agriculture has sent you a letter, they have stated by their chief attorney what the building statute is. You have that. Each one of you have that. Josh Rowe just sent a note. He said agritourism... Rowe just sent a note, he said agritourism is regulated by the Department of Wildlife. The court said, "You don't regulate agritourism or agriculture." So, what happens on these items is Kirk is exactly right. You have to have a legislative change. We're not opposed to it, but you do have to do it the correct way. And in your power and position, it is your responsibility to uphold the law. I don't know who else can tell you. So, just to recap, the Department of Agriculture has told you, the Department of Wildlife has told you, the courts have told you, you need to follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, if there's no one else to be heard, it's back before the commission.
I would just if you make this comment, uh, the AG's opinion that was referenced was on a case specific, uh, and frequently, that's the request the AG's office get, uh, is a specifics of a particular case, which can be different from the wider application. Uh, and, uh, the action that's before us today is to come into compliance, and to support the agritourism industry. And, uh, this change has been made, is fully compliant, in my judgment, with state statute, and, uh, to indicate otherwise, uh, is, uh, is extending beyond, uh, beyond what's really said. None of us, in a public event setting, a facility, can escape the public safety responsibility. Um, and I'd suggest this, uh, even though the owner of the facility may not be exempt, the county is never exempt from, uh, uh, the liability if we have not taken proper measures on a public event space. Uh, in my judgment, this is not applied to the pumpkin patch, does not apply to a winery, uh, and does not apply to the growing of grapes, or any of the farm activities. Uh, but, uh, if you have an event space, or the public is invited to participate, uh, our building codes, our safety codes already apply. And I think the Planning Commission recognized that. So, the only thing, uh, this, uh, this, uh, part of the, uh, of the resolution is speaking to is to make sure it's identified upfront, so that everybody is aware of that.
Mr. Schaefer?
I'd like to make a motion if I may, sir, if it's time.
All right.
Uh, two separate motions, is that correct?
Correct.
I move that the board adopt Resolution Number zero seven one dash seventeen, which approves certain amendments to the county zoning and subdivision regulations concerning minor regulation changes to clarify, refine, and update existing regulations as recommended by the Planning Commission, and is more fully set forth within the resolution, I'll move.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, Counselor, you, you heard some of the, uh, the comments made relative to the court case that was brought forward, and the ruling on that. And it was suggested, um, and, and I'm trying to understand the, I have brief here, or whatever, the, the ruling here, it's just on my computer, and trying to understand this. Um, what he is saying basically is that the court ruling, whether directly or indirectly implied, is that we're very limited, even from a building code and a public safety standpoint, of what we can enforce and not.
The, the court in the court case here did not talk about-
I'm just gonna say that all-
The court here didn't talk about building codes or, or public safety. The, the police power that was talked about was that there was also a citation issued under our events codes regulation, which is a total, separate piece from our zoning and subdivision regulations, where, um, we do have regulations that talk about concerts and parties and things of that nature that occur in the unincorporated area, that, that a permit is required on. That was the part of the police power that the court said, "Well, zoning wise, you can't use your events regulations for, to try to regulate the same event." But they did not get into the question of building codes or, um, public safety issue.
And then I'm gonna bring up another issue, and, and, um, Chairman, I thought this thing has gotten, I thought it should be a simple issue. Obviously, I have to take that back based on my other comments earlier. This gets more complicated every time, because, Commissioner Brown, you did bring up a good point, as far as the building code issue. Um, the basic building code issues, if a building is being used for, for residential or event purposes, or things like this, is the building codes that are on the books recognize that today. Do they not? You're suggesting maybe they don't, and a whole new set of codes need, needs to, to come out relative, to respond to this agritourism bit. And, and I guess I'm, I'm kinda wondering, don't our codes recognize the various uses that construction and building is done? For instance, um, we've got the winery. You have events over there and so forth. Weren't the, weren't the building codes that you constructed or put that building together, recognized the number of people, potential number of people who could utilize that facility? I'm, I'm kinda just raising this up at a point, and so the appropriate building codes were basically applied to that concept. We've got discussions coming on right now, relative to wedding barns, or whatever. Um, if it's going to be an event space that's gonna have potentially three hundred people, they're gonna have to do a sprinkler system and various things to accommodate that group of folks. So, I guess what I'm, I'm questioning, don't the building codes we have in place recognize the various types of usages that we have, and do we have to go through a whole revamping of this? So, I'm, 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 I'm confused.
As I recall, as I recall, the, uh, the, and Mr. Schaefer, you can verify this, uh, the, the Planning Commission said that existing codes, public safety, fire codes, are already on the books, and they need to be, uh, fulfilled. Uh, and that this statement was simply redundant of whatever exists. So, I think the Planning Commission indicated that the applicable, uh, public safety codes, uh, are going to be enforced. Uh, and really, the only thing we're doing here is to advising anybody upfront, and I think that's important. So, that's, that's a simple-
But in responding to, to Commissioner Brown here, I'm just trying to understand why we have to go through a whole revamping of codes, when, right now, I believe, I'm, I'm under the understanding that our codes are responsive to the various types of usage.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brown? If I may address that question. Uh, the IBC is uniformly and blanketly applied, except in jurisdictions where it's not been adopted, or by modification. Multiple jurisdictions, for instance, in the residential community, even within Johnson County, Kansas, have exempted certain codes. The city of Shawnee said, "The whole thing applies, except for the international plumbing code section of the International Residential Code. We adopt it in whole, except that piece." That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about writing a new codebook that applies only to agritourism in Johnson County, Kansas, but going through specifically and saying, "These sections apply. When you're creating an event space, these are the things you need to know, you need to comply with," not the entire codebook. That's, that has been my point from the beginning of this conversation, and I hope that provides a little bit of clarity for your question.
Allow for a bit of this conversation here, I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. But, um, I guess, uh, from that standpoint, I'm, as I said, from a public perception standpoint, we've messed with this issue of agritourism long enough. It's time to tell the public we're out of that business. And that's why I'd like to see this thing move forward and, 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 and get done. Well, I, I recognize to you, Commissioner Brown, that if you feel like there are certain components of the building code that need to be addressed, I have no problems dealing with that. We can deal with that here over the next weeks, two months, or, or whatever, when we can at least bring the, the, the building code folks in here and say, "Where are we wrong?" And then I would respond that if we've got inconsistencies here, and that we believe the county should have a little bit more control over the safety and so forth, I would probably subscribe to, to Mr. Bergman's, uh, uh, Bergman's, uh, attitude, is that maybe there is an appropriate time to change the law. But up to that, I would like to see this thing just move a step forward. And as I said earlier, if, if there's the appearance, perception, or whatever, of an overreach, I wanna know about it, because we need to address it. I don't wanna feel like, as a result of this discussion, that there's any sense of retaliation versus going back to any, uh, operators or businesses today, or future businesses, 'cause that's not the intention of this commission. I know we've been wrestling to figure out how to get this thing consistent with state law, and I, and I appreciate that. It's been painful. But I think we need to make a step forward and to push on.
Okay, the motion is before us. Any further discussion, Mr. Allen?
Just one quick comment. Our next item on the agenda is our legislative platform for the state, and I will bring up, uh, Mr. Bergman's suggestion about, uh, uh, maybe putting something in our agenda to address this issue also.
Okay. Mr. Schaefer, do you have a comment?
No, I was gonna, it is simple. We pass the motion as it is, and then I go, I agree with the chair. This informs our citizens where we're at, it makes them aware of the situation. It's as simple as that. I think it's a simple vote.
Okay, all right. Well, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
No.
Commissioner Ashcroft?
Is absent.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Iwlett?
Chairman Iwlett?
Aye.
Motion carried. Do I hear a motion on the second item?
I move that the board adopt Resolution Number zero seven nine dash seventeen, which approves a position statement to address agricultural and agritourism-related activities in, in the unincorporated areas of Johnson County, Kansas, as more fully set forth within the resolution. I move.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to approve that resolution. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, yeah. Can I get, uh, some clarification on that? Is that just the one that says we're not gonna regulate farm wineries? Is that the, am I correct on that?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes.
The first one was the minor edits to the, um, subdivision and zoning regulations, and we did not include the farm wineries as a separate use. The motion that's now before you is the position statement.
Which does, okay. Yeah. All right, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Iwlett?
Aye. Motion carried.
All right, next item.
Item number nine, consider adopting the twenty eighteen Johnson County State Legislative Platform and the Johnson County Government and City's Joint Twenty Eighteen Legislative Platform.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Cindy Green with County Manager's Office, and we are here to do one final look at our state legislative platform that's been recommended for approval. There has been one item that's been added since you received this last week and the week before, and this is on page five of your document, and you should have the new document in the packet. And this is gonna be item two point one two, and it's in regards to property tax exemptions for government entities. We are going to ask the state if they will update the statutes in regards to allowing the county appraiser, rather than the state, to, the ability to grant property tax exemptions on property owned by government entities and used for exempt purpose. They would still have to go through the process of applying for the exemption, but this would speed up the process.
Well, I fully support this. Uh, it seems to me like, I don't know what the agenda is at BOTA, but currently BOTA has to approve these, which should be just a matter-of-fact action. And in the recent case, it's taken, what, five or six weeks after it was submitted to the, to the Board of Tax Appeals, which has caused some issues locally. So, I think this is a great idea. Mr. Osterhaus?
Uh, you addressed my question, Chairman, so thank you.
Uh, Mr. Allen, you wanted to, uh, include clarification?
Yes, and I may, uh, struggle with the wording on this, so I maybe would, uh, have some suggestion, uh, from staff, possibly Cindy, maybe, to, uh, insert in our platform to address the issue of, uh, public safety requirements in, I don't know if we wanna say event center, or, uh, to come up with some type of wording, that, uh, to, to look at, uh, a, a change in the, the law on allowing public safety to be included in those type of facilities.
You know, I, I certainly don't have a problem with that. It was interesting to me at the recent KAC conference, there was a lot of discussion about agritourism. Uh, we are not the only county in the state that's struggling with, uh, uh, that issue, uh, and we were told that, uh, you know, the statute or the regulations refer to agritourism as a rural experience. How widely can you define those two words, "a rural experience"? Uh, and in an unrelated to agritourism, uh, it was noted that, uh, Finney County, uh, Garden City, uh, has an issue of a feedlot expansion, and, uh, the feedlot is, is claiming that, uh, the county has no ability to regulate, uh, uh, their activity. And, uh, I'm told that Finney County has filed, uh, a, a court action in that regard. So, uh, the issue's gonna continue to, uh, move around at different levels, I think, in the state of Kansas, and, uh, until, uh, the legislature takes a more definitive position on some of these items, uh, that will be the case. So, I think this, this makes sense.
So, no problem coming up with language, right, Cindy?
Not at all, sir. We will get that accomplished, and I will share that language with you all.
All right. Any, anything else, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Cindy, I had brought this up last week. It would be on page six, three point eight, dark store theory. Um, I understand, uh, the dark store theory. I understand the opposition to the dark store theory. I understand that the implications to the property tax base in Johnson County are substantial. Um, I struggle with the difference between a piece of real estate that is unoccupied versus a piece of real estate that is occupied. Um, a business in a piece of real estate is paying income tax, they're paying, they're paying their taxes for the business and how it's performing. That a piece of real estate is then also valued because of the business in the box. I struggle with that. As a business owner, I understand the, the, the difference between those two, and I struggle with that as a part of, of our platform. I understand that that may ultimately, i- if I were to prevail in that argument, that that could push a shift for expense onto the property, personal, real, residential real estate property, tax owners in Johnson County. At the same time, I am in favor of transparency and equity, and equalness in its application. I struggle with valuing a piece of real estate based on who's using it. I'm, I am opposed to that as a part of our platform, and I, I'm supportive of the rest. I, I, but I would be not non-supportive of, uh, item three point eight.
Okay.
Respectfully, I'll disagree again, Mr. Brown.
I'm doing that today.
Uh, there are, as I understand, again, this was an issue that was talked about at the KAC conference the last couple of days. I understand there's a court case proceeding, uh, Wichita or Sedgwick County has filed, uh, against the Target Stores for that, uh, for that, and, and there may be some others. Uh, the, uh, the, the state statute says that property must be valued as to its, uh, highest and best use. And, uh, when you have a Target Store, or a Walmart Store, uh, that's generating, uh, uh, millions of- millions of dollars of business, the statute says you must, you must consider that. So if this thing goes forward, the dark stores theory, I think the next thing that should be done, residential property owners should ask for the same consideration. Even though we were living in our homes, they need to be considered dark as though there was nobody living there, and so therefore have no value. So I think we need to keep this front and center in our legislative agenda. Mr. Allen?
I think this is frankly a very critical issue to the tax structure, not only of Kansas, to Johnson County, and I think we maybe need to take a proactive stance, and I'd like to maybe have our Appraiser's Office come up with some type of cutoff on a certain-sized building. I don't know what the appropriate square footage would be, but I think you'd catch most of the major grocery stores, home improvement, Walmarts and everything. If we knew how many retail stores we have in Johnson County that are over 50,000 square feet, what their assessed valuation is. This would not only affect the revenue position of the county, frankly, it would tremendously affect the revenue position of the school districts, cities, actually the state mill levy that they receive from us. There's tens of millions of dollars of tax implication on this theory. So I think we need to know, maybe have a little bit better understanding, in a worst-case scenario, what our exposure would be, and then to tag on what the Chairman was saying, if that revenue goes away, it's a tax shift, where would that go? And then I agree, if you say a big-box store, you see the same thing with restaurants, that they go in and, for whatever reason, they don't make it, they become a dark store. So where does this all end up with? So it's not as simple as these major department stories arguing that theory. It's all the other implications. So I think we need to have a better understanding where that would be, and maybe have some more implications that we could communicate to our legislature, is you open that Pandora's Box, what the potential is, and then what it would do, not only to the state revenue, but to the school districts, cities, and all the taxing authorities. So.
Okay, any other, any other questions or comments? All right, do I hear a motion that we approve the proposed legislative agenda? Mr. Klicka?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the legislative agenda platform, our legislative platform for 2018.
With the additional, with the additions in regards to...
The dark store theory and also the...
Well, the dark store is already there.
Okay, but I mean, there's some attachment.
Talking about the...
Agritourism, I'm sorry.
Clarifications that the appraiser be given the authority to exempt those, rather than going through BOTA. So, okay.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
No.
Chairman Iler.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items?
No, sir.
Okay. That concludes the action portion of our agenda. We will move to reports and communications. Mr. Zacharias?
Mr. Chairman, I know that we're getting kind of beyond the lunch hour here. We'll try to be efficient. I do want to report you some things that are really exciting. First of all, Tyler Collections Implementation. We've been working on a project, a Land Records Project, for about the last 15 years, and Chris Hall, I think, is here to go ahead and talk about that information, to kind of walk you through what that really means. But this is groundsetting. You know that one of our major objectives is trying to integrate our databases. It's one of our strategic objectives, think that, I know Commissioner Allen's been very, very adamant about activity. Well, this is a great example of that activity, bringing together all the activities for treasurer, appraiser, and collections unit together under one area. The first time it's been done in the state of Kansas, but I'll let Chris go ahead and talk about it some more.
Good morning, or good afternoon, and thank you very much. Christopher Hall, I am the PMO manager for the Department of Technology and Innovation, and PMO stands for the Project Management Office. So I manage all the project managers and business analysts in deploying software systems. And I also manage projects, to include the Tyler Collections Implementation. And I'm pleased to up-report today. There's a sea change in terms of the software infrastructure used to collect and tax, and collect taxes. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the project goals, the intents and purposes, also the scope of the project, who it affects, what the risks are, what the impact could be, a little bit on the implementation approach and key decisions that were made to mitigate risk, and then chat about implementation results and impact to the county. So one of the primary goals was to replace aging tax collection systems, and it turns out we replaced three. For instance, in the year 2000, TR 2000 was implemented, and this provided the ability of the county to accept one check from multiple tax bills, and was, you know, really important at that time. Over the years, also, there was a web collection tax bill, so people could log into an infrastructure, go on the Internet, and pay their bills online. But I think the big gorilla in the room is the Oasis system. That's been in place and in production in the county since 1987. Just as a point of reference, Microsoft Windows first came in 1985. So in some respects, we've been working on Microsoft 2.0 in the tax collection realms for 30 years. So this creates significant risk for us at the county as we have a system that's aged, it's no longer supported, the operating systems aren't being updated, the system's not being updated, and if that system should go down, well, there's a significant risk in terms of having access to that information and taxes collected. So another goal was to decrease system maintenance fees. As to keep the Oasis system up and functional, we had to partner with vendors in a decreasing population of vendors over time to have licenses and support available for a very critical system. And over that 30 years, those expenses became significant. Additionally, we were looking at a modern development environment. What I mean by that is one that brings this system up and, you know, into our current realm, in terms of being able to make operating system updates, system updates. It provides a platform for vendors to come develop the new modules for us. It also provides essential functionality for our departments to access information and perform their work processes. And lastly, was to ensure the integrity of the tax roll information. Obviously, taxes are a very sensitive subject, and it's critical that we're as accurate as possible in implementing a new system. So in terms of scope, this system affects most of our county residents. We'll be sending out approximately 237,000 tax bills using this system for 2017, with a total appraisal value of $75 million, and about $1.2 billion of collections. So that's a significant risk on this project, because we have to send out accurate tax bills. We have to collect them accurately. We also have to report those findings and the totals back to taxing entities such as the cities, townships, and states. In addition, this scope reflected three primary county departments. I'm sure you're familiar with the work of the Appraiser's Office, the Record and Taxation Administration, and also TFM. And we took a system that had been installed in 2007, and we expanded its capabilities to work with the RTA and TFM office. And one fascinating part of taxes is how something that seems so simple on the surface, to value something, to take a percentage, to come up with a tax and collect it, can come so complicated when you look at the statutory requirements, business processes, work needs, reporting needs of all these different departments. And one way of putting this, if I were a medical doctor, we literally replace the brainstem of an individual with this system. It's that significant. Also with delinquent collections, we had to ensure the county had the ability to collect all existing payments that were outstanding, and we also had data conversion and system decommission. And we actually took data from three different systems and combined them, which was approximately 300 million financial transactions that took place. We also have to decommission these old systems and make sure we have audit and read-only capability. This system also includes state reporting as part of certification processes. Extract files have to be sent to the state so that there's overview of the whole tax rule process. And finally, we needed a robust system infrastructure. So we had a system primarily used by one department, and we had to double its capacity, and we had to ensure that that system was available and that functionality was speedy enough to meet their needs. In terms of implementation approach, we contracted with Tyler Technologies in 2014. The total contract amount today stands at about $2.8 million. In our first process step was what we called gap analysis. And what we do is we look at the system's existing functionality and compare it to what we need. And one huge issue for vendors coming into a new state is their ability for their system to meet the functional needs, the statutory requirements at the county. This was a significant effort. It took us about a year, and what actually happened was Tyler Technologies enhanced their system, and almost, I'll say, what, 50, 60%, to meet the state of Kansas requirements, to include how appraisals conducted, assessments conducted, how different property types are calculated, the means by which this information is shared with the RTA's office. They modified the tax collection calculation process, individual reports for all the different departments. To include, all the state abstracts were customized. Our supplements process was customized. We had our own payment module that was built specifically for us, a new tax bill website that had to be modified, all the way down to financial exports, imports, integration with the Oracle system. So this is a significant undertaking. And we started testing of this system approximately November of 2015. So we've been at it for two years. And we eventually reached a state where what we did was we performed parallel system processing approximately June 15th of this year, where we continued data entry into the old system and did additional data entry into the new system to ensure that the results were accurate. As part of that process, we were able to slowly and iteratively bring on key system modules over time to reduce risk. And I think it worked pretty well. So in terms of implementation results and impact to the county, very pleased to announce that John Bartelak certified the 2017 tax rule using Orion Collections. And we actually performed tax calculation and compared them between each system, and we were off about 1/100,000 of 1%, which was about $140 over $1.2 billion, which is pretty darn good. So we have a very good data set that's going to be used going forward. All the tax bills are coming out of the system, all the collections will be coming out, put into the system and coming out. So we have a new system of record for taxes and collections after 30 years. One key point I'd like to make is continuity of services, and I think this, as far as I'm concerned, as a project manager, was the most important thing we had to address. And in my mind, if you're looking at performance metrics and what success looks like, is if no one notices. If your tax bill's accurate, if your payments are accurate, if this information's distributed appropriately to the different taxing entities, and no one notices, that is exactly what we were attempting to do in our goal. So I do have one lesson learned that might be appropriate at this level, and what we're finding with larger system implementations, including this one, the niche implementation that was approved by the Board for all the RMS, even mobile applications or unified electronic health records, is how important it is to have strategic and engaged private vendors that assist us in bringing up this technology. It's key. And it's a different type of relationship, because they need to custom-develop their systems in order to support our work processes. And that's occurring right now even with the niche system. And that might take a different type of contract, even type of funding, to ensure that's successful. With that said, in terms of cost savings and efficiencies, savings from decommission of the mainframe will save approximately $200,000 a year. When I did the math and looked, it would take about 2024, 2025, before that maintenance reduction fully paid for this implementation. We're also decreasing staff by two FTEs. In terms of soft savings, we're eliminating a significant amount of backend processing that's required to balance multiple systems. If you apply payments to two systems, you have to balance that information between the two to make sure they're accurate, which is no longer necessary. Also, this removes delays due to system interfaces, makes staff a little bit more productive, and it gives them the ability to access information directly within the system itself, and which will improve efficiencies. So in regards to next steps, our primary goal here is to ensure continuity of services. We meet daily to discuss the system, to ensure it's working as intended. We're monitoring the infrastructure. We still have to deliver and test some additional enhancements, because we're using a phased approach, not to overwhelm our vendor with enhancement needs. And probably most importantly, is we need to learn to work together in this new system. As with 30 years of existing work processes, they are now in one system, and so there'll be some learning curves there. So I've had just a real joy of working with some outstanding individuals. If I named one, I'd probably be up here five minutes, so I won't do that. But I'm available for questions if you have any.
Chris, before we do that for a second, I do want to give some recognition to you, because you've been at this for a long time, your team as well. But this is groundbreaking activities. We fully expect to go and make presentations at NACO and other places about this stuff. But I want to thank you and your team for great work.
A good report. Other questions?
Just thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next item...
Just a second, Mr. Chairman, we have two other items in my report, if I can, one of which is lobbying services that we got coming up as well. And as you may recall, Commissioners, that we have a lobbying contract that we, that let expire, and we went out for an RFP processes. There was a committee that came forward with Mr. Chairman yourself, Commissioner Allen, Maury Thompson, and Cindy Green to go ahead and bring forward a recommendation for a lobbying contract with the selected vendor. In this case, it is, I'm looking at the name right here. Yeah.
Federico.
John Federico Consulting, so he calls himself. With the amount listed at that point, we have traditionally allowed you all, or asked you all to go and approve that contract, even though it's underneath my authority. We thought it was appropriate to have a separate process to make all those things happen. So we could take a moment, Mr. Chairman, and approve that contract. We certainly appreciate it.
All right. Any questions? Any comments? Mr. Allen?
No, I thought we had three good candidates, interviewed all three, but Mr. Federico, in my opinion, came out on top. And if it's appropriate, I would make a motion to approve the contract.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract, and this would be for a one-year period of time, a single-year contract only.
Yes.
Do we need to state the amount?
Don't need to. I think just if you'd like to, it's for the fee holds of $54,000 annually with $1,000 for expenses.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this because of a personal relationship that I have with John Federico, so I will stand down for this vote.
Okay. Well, having been around the State House for a few years, I know Mr. Federico, but I will not excuse myself from the vote. I don't see that as a particular conflict. I've not had any business dealings or lobbying relationships directly with Mr. Federico. So, motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract. Is there any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Epstein.
And Chairman Iler.
Aye. Motion carried.
And one last item. Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, you've been asking us for quite some time to talk about performance metrics, and we've had a team working diligently on this project. And we've had Robin Slange, who kind of handled this project along with many others, and just want to give you an update. We did launch a website that talks about that, so it'll take just a few minutes to let you know what it looks like, and kind of just answer a few questions and go from that point. But I want to thank the team again. We're doing some great work in this area, again, to try to go and make transparency happen more profoundly on our websites, and great stuff, so I'll let Robin proceed.
All right, we started this process...
Exactly, summary, I hope.
Yes, very quick. Yeah, yeah. Been waiting a long time for our two minutes. We started this process in January. Penny Poste Ferguson talked with Susan Meyer and I to establish a team. We did that. Very talented people. We have Susan Meyer, Tom Dugan from the We have Susan Meyer, Tom Dugan from the Budget Office, Brian Seither from Corrections, Chris Kelly for Mental Health, Jasmine Moore from DHE, Patrick Bean from Waste Water, Mindy La from Museum, Troy Cawkins from DTI and Brett Williamson from DTI. And then we also worked with PIO. The one thing that I do want to say before I go on is at the very end, Troy Cawkins, he helped us really bring it all together. He worked a lot of hours. Chris Kelly also helped. Tom, all of us helped at the end, but those two probably did the most work at the end in really getting this together. So let's just go to it. If you go to the main website, just so you all know where it's placed at, if you go under Departments and then you'll go to the County Manager's Office. Down here on the green little tabs, there's a JOCOPulse, that's what we've named it. And then if you come down here, you can actually go to the JOCOPulse. And it brings up this, it's a little distorted here just with the, anyway, with this program here. So what will come up is you can come up here and pick your list of values and you can pick our different themes. You can also go into JOCO vitals and it has different documents out there that you can look at as far as information for the county. And so if we come down here, then there's different buttons for each of those themes, healthy and engaged communities, customer focus, leadership and inclusion, public safety, infrastructure and development. And so just quickly, if you click on one of these buttons, public safety, it then takes you to our goals and outcomes which we've listed and then it also has our different measures. And then it's highlighted in green, yellow, you can see up here, green's on target, yellow's caution, red is below plan, then we have some with some no information that we're still working on or that, you know, it takes time to get that from the different areas or there's a delayed time for that. So if you come in here, you can look at, for example, we have a cardiac arrest measure. If you click on it, then it comes down and then it actually has the graph. You can see a target and then we have our 2015 and 2016 data. And then if you go down a little bit further, you can actually see for the public what it is and why it matters. And so we have that information from them as well. And so you can go into all of the different measures. You know, I encourage you to go out and look at this, peruse it. If you have suggestions, please offer it to us. If you go further down on the website, you can see we have some other just general information for the public, live, work, learn and play, which I think was pulled from our annual report. And then you can see some additional information here for the public. But, you know, again, we're excited that it's out there. We've been working for a year on it and I know it's been an initiative of some of the board members and also Hanus, so we're excited that we've met this objective. But again, please look at it, let us know any comments and this is an evolving process. We'll continue to refine it. We're looking at it being an annual report right now, our annual refresh. And so just let us know any feedback you have.
Thank you. Very good.
Good job. Thank you. Mr. Osterhaus? Let me ask you this. Can we defer your report until the next regular meeting?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Excuse me, was there anything else, Mr. Zacharias?
No, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Moving to commission comments, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a couple. Belated happy birthday to Sheriff Calvin Hayden. Birthday was last Saturday. And congrats to all who won elections last Tuesday night and to those who lost, I would say, do not stop trying. We are better for your efforts. We have a recount today. We're going to find out how a really close one turned out. So that's actually pretty exciting. Last Saturday, I was at the Veterans Day memorial service at the Korean War Memorial in Overland Park. Chairman Ilert, Gerald Hay and Amber Durn did a fantastic job. It was well done. It was well orchestrated and I was very proud to be standing there as a part of that. That's all. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Osterhaus?
I'll echo Commissioner Brown's comments on the election and the, our Veterans Day celebration. We had a number of people who came up to me at church who were actually in attendance there and said they really appreciated that the county did that. It was their first time being there and they were really thankful for that. Yeah, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
I'm going to quickly congratulate two of our commissioners, Commissioner Osterhaus engaged and Commissioner Schaefer had your first grandchild, so congratulations. Just both of you.
All right. Thank you. Finally. Present officially both ends of the spectrum.
I think Commissioner Osterhaus broke Facebook.
I didn't know I had so many friends that cared. Very nice and touching.
Mr. Clicker?
I can't outdo the news of both Commissioner Osterhaus and Commissioner Schaefer. I'm leaving it there. Congratulations, both of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, a number of us went to the Veterans Day celebration last Saturday. Very nicely done, Chair. And also yesterday afternoon, Carol Gonzalez recessed. I thought Jim was going to mention that. They're going to miss her in shining, but we are going to welcome her at the Mid-America Regional Council, so best to her.
Very good. Just to note, I think the Northeast Johnson County Chamber Annual Gala event is this Saturday evening. Several of us might be attending. And next week, Thanksgiving holiday, obviously the county will take that holiday. There will be no meeting next Thursday.
No meeting?
As well as, we're making up for it. We're making up for it today, yeah. The, also, so county offices will be closed both Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving Day celebration. And I want to say a special thank you, reiterate Gerald Hay and Amber Durn, who really are the muscle, I would say, behind putting together the Veterans Day event. They've both done that for a good many years and they do a terrific job. Thank you all. So we do have a request for an executive session. Mr. Allen?
So we have one item on the Public Building Commission, so 10 minutes maybe?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. I would move that the Board recesses, it's open meeting and convene an executive session at approximately 12:40 PM for a period of 15 minutes for the purpose of receiving the advice of council and to protect the attorney-client privilege and to reconvene an open session at approximately 12:55 or thereafter as the executive session may end.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the request for the executive session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Clicker?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried.
So we are in recess from our regular business session. We'll come back in a few minutes for the Public Building Commission item. Thank you all very much.
Oh, no.